Okay, let's go to the meeting, we're ready to go. Good evening, good evening to you today, July 20, 2021, at 6:04 PM. I'm going to call this meeting of the Westboro Police Department Board to the Board. Um, please, if you have really enabled eyes to say your congratulations. Our pleasure to be here is in my life, in the United States of America. To be with all of our citizens, one nation, one empire, we will live so, for the benefit of the citizens of our home. So our, um, agenda's been, our agenda's been posted. Our agenda's been posted, it's scrolling on the screen for those, um, viewers at home. Um, this is what we're meeting, um, we're often block through on the openings and town boards and committees. Given the way our agenda is sitting, folks here to participate will foreknow that, um, that information is scrolling on Westboro Police Department's stations, on charter, on refires. It's all available on, also available on the town's websites. If you are interested in serving the community in any way, shape, or form, reach out, we will match your interests in opening a community of the word opportunity design.
Better than Matchup.com.
Better than Matchup.com, thank you. Um, I go, um, getting the number of folks here for the second bit on our agenda, which is the Police Department Ceremony. Um, I'm going to use my chairs for my agit, we're delaying open forum until after that agenda. And so, at this point, um, so first item covering today is the Police Department Ceremony introduction. We're getting in of new personnel and beginning personnel, chief.
So I'd like to thank everyone for coming, those that are home watching, the select board. It's been an interesting year and a half for your Westboro Police Department. We weathered the storm well, and that's because of our fantastic team. You know, modern's work alongside the amazing men and women. And, uh, I'll be reading a brief bio, and I'm sure you will agree with me. You know, we, three and a half years ago, uh, we decided we were going to hire a straight guy. Uh, there was a couple of reasons for that. One, uh, the folks we serve deserve it, the officers that work here need to have the very best. Uh, so our process is very strenuous, and I say every day I'm surrounded by rock stars. So I'm going to introduce you to our newest vehicles, and we're going to start with Officer Alicia O'Brien. Officer Alicia O'Brien, she was raised in Connecticut, began her law enforcement journey in Multilore, New Hampshire PD, where she served for four years. Prior to her law enforcement career, Officer O'Brien served active duty in the US Army, deploying to both Iraq and Afghanistan. Officer O'Brien received her master's degree from Sala Regina University. She's currently assigned to the Community Policing and Social Media Unit, and also a part of our honor guard. She was hired by the Westboro Police Department in December of 2019. I want to also commend her, she was recently the employee of the month of the Town of Westboro, and she currently serves on the Westboro Veterans Advisory Board. And I think that's important to note, that many of our officers you'll see in their bios do a lot outside of Westboro. So they're committed to the community, uh, they're empathetic caring police officers that are giving their own time, giving back, uh, foot for others. Basically, her family members, uh, she has a twin sister, um, Becca with twin sons, uh, Jackson and Declan. She's going to be pinned by her husband, Trooper Sean O'Brien. Next, Officer William Ethier Jr. Officer Ethier was born and raised in Auburn, Massachusetts, he graduated from Auburn High School. He's currently enrolled in the bachelor's degree program in criminal justice through Annarara College. He worked for the Ottrich Police Department from 2016 to 2019. I hired him there for a reason, and he's here for a reason. Family members, uh, his mom Helen Ethier, dad Billy Ethier Senior, his sisters, Michelle and Erin, brothers Matthew, Aaron of Auburn, Fire Department, and his other twin brother Christopher Ethier. He's going to be pinned by his wife Bridgette and son Logan. Officer Peter Girardi Jr. Born and raised in Worcester, Mass, graduated from Holy Name High School. He graduated from Worcester State University in 2015 with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He's currently enrolled in a master's program through Annarara College. He was hired January 2nd, 2020. Family members Deborah, Ernestet is his mom, Peter Girardi Senior, father, Brianna Girardi, his wife, and Gabriella Girardi, his daughter, and Christian Girardi's sister, who'll be pinned by his wife Brianna. Officer Thomas Tepper. Born in Poland, moved to the United States when he was four, he was raised in Somerville, Mass. He moved to Conway, New Hampshire, where he worked for the Conway Police Department for five years. He graduated from Somerville High School, studied graphic design and commercial art at Ute Terrace School of Art in Boston. Currently working on becoming a member of the Crime Scene Unit with the Westboro Police Department. He was hired by Westboro PD on April 1st, 2020. Family member's wife, his family member's wife Becca, his twin sons Jackson and Declan, pinned by his wife Becca. Odell McKenna. From Stoughton, Mass, originally born in the Ukraine, bilingual. He has a, he has an associate's degree from a SOIA Community College, and he's currently enrolled in the Bachelor's Program at Annarara College. Uh, from, he worked at Adderall PD, Cohasset PD. He was hired 11/9/2020. He's part of our Community Policing Unit and our Bike Unit. Officer Raymond Joseph Bell. He was raised in North Grapton, Mass, graduated from Grapton High School, obtained a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Westfield State University, currently pursuing his master's degree through Annarara College. Worked as a reserve police officer in Westboro for three years. He was hired by the Westboro Police Department March 27th, 2021. Family members, uh, mom and dad Pierre, Claire, and Roy, pinned by his wife and mom. Pinned by the mom. Officer John Sweeney. Officer Sweeney's originally from North Attleboro. John received his master's degree in criminal justice leadership from Northeastern University. Officer Sweeney began his career with the Northeastern University Police Department, where he was certified as a Great Depression Defense Instructor. Officer Sweeney comes to us from the Massachusetts State Police. Westboro PD hired him this past July 9th, 2021. Uh, he also brings several of those specialties, it's assigned to the Police Department, such as a crime scene, excuse me, uh... Uh, family members, wife Gabriella, son Theodore, and daughter Evelyn are here today. They'll be pinned by his wife Gabriella. Who's not with us today will be sworn in on August 24th is Officer Jonathan Hale. I have to report he's on his honeymoon right now, unfortunately couldn't be with us today. I would ask the town clerk to please come forward and swear in our offices.
So if you'll bother me, please kind of just turn towards me and raise your right hand. If you'd raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the United States of America and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and will support the constitutions and laws thereof? And that you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a patrol officer for the Town of Westboro, and will obey and be bound by such laws, rules, and regulations as are or may be from time to time laid down for the government and of the Town of Westboro Police Department? So help me God. Yeah, graduation.
Go. Thank you, our officers, would you please come forward? So I'm honored to say, in three and a half years, we've hired 17 police officers, and we've promoted them. Our two of those promotions are here before you tonight. We're going to start with Sergeant Christopher H. You could come forward. Sergeant H. was born and raised in Westboro, uh, he graduated from Westboro High School. He received his undergraduate degree, a bachelor's degree in criminal justice with a minor in psychology from Worcester State University. He, uh, obtained a bachelor's degree in public administration from Annarara College. He has several specialty assignments, uh, with the Westboro Police Department. He's a field training officer, a drone operator, part of our Crime Scene Unit, defensive tactics, he's a force instructor, and he's also in charge of our Reserve Police Office Force. I also want to say he's an assistant hockey coach at Westboro High School. And that's what I say about our officers that are giving back beyond their role in law enforcement. His mom Joan, dad Bruce, sister Katie, wife Ashley, son Carter, daughter Carson. And he'll be pinned today by his wife and son. I would now request that Sergeant Greg Shipper come forward. Sergeant Shipper is from Denver, Colorado. He has a bachelor's of science in kinesiology in the University of Northern Carolina, and a master's degree of public administration at Annarara College. He comes from us, from the Lakewood, Colorado Police Department. This is a police department of over 400 sworn personnel. In 2016, he was the Employee of the Year for that agency. He worked at Lakewood from 2005 to 2017, we hired him in Westboro July 2018. He's also in charge of our Honor Guard. His wife Shannon and daughter Tessa is here today, and they will both be pinning him. If I could have our clerk swear our statements in.
If you would raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and will support the constitutions and the laws thereof? And that you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a police officer sergeant in the Town of Westboro, and will obey and be bound by such laws, rules, and regulations as are or may be from time to time laid down for the government and of the Town of Westboro Police Department? So help me God. Graduation.
Those pinning our statements, please come forward. That concludes our, our ceremony for today. I want to really thank the board for allowing us to come before you. For me, it's a celebration, like I said, it's been a tough year and a half. And I want you to be, see, uh, who you're talented of, standing officers out of that selfless clean service community every day, uh, during very difficult times, you know, work, work every day. And it's just a part, we're honored to serve and be a part of this department, be a part of this community. Thank you very much for the opportunity, and you've been a part of us, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so next item on agenda, and we'll back to the before. If there's anyone present, or she just need to go on the forum, please identify yourself. Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda, uh, to the next item, which is the discussion of votes declared July 4th, 2021, as Michael Askey. I can do the introduction. So Michael Askey, graduated from Westboro High School in 1968, and was a standout athletic student. He enlisted in the Marines the year after, and served in the Vietnam War. He was promoted to Staff Sergeant after attending drill instructor school, and was a senior drill instructor. He took Taiwan from the military to attend college, graduated from Framingham State University in 1976. He and his wife lived in Virginia for several years, started a family, eventually earned a master's degree from Georgetown University. He rose up in the ranks of the Marines, obtaining the rank of captain. During one of his deployments, he was killed with a suicide bomber driven into Marine barracks on October 23rd, 1983. In total, two Measure 13 Marines were killed in an attack. He was posthumously awarded Purple Heart. Framingham State University named their veterans service a sign after him, and there's a park in Beverly, Massachusetts named in his honor as a memorial for portion of his childhood. A new memorial is being dedicated to him on July 31st, on the Forbes Municipal Building. The board is asked to declare July 31st, 2021 as Michael Askey. The ceremony is scheduled for that day will include a full military guard, family, and other dignitaries. And it's, um, if there's a member, if anyone from veterans, veterans board would like to speak, we welcome.
I would just like to ask, do you have any questions? Or you want to know why? Because it's the right thing to do. And back in the day, the boy named the street, and that was pretty significant. And I think we should continue this. Uh, there's another reason. Westboro is known as one of the better towns for veterans, because of the Veterans Advisory Board. And the publicity that this town gets is wonderful for the veterans. And I'll just let you know that the main speaker is going to be the National Vice Commander of the Marine Corps League, who's in charge of 60,000 Marines who are going to retire. And then the President of Framingham State, Dr. Sibaus, is going to speak. And we hope, although you were going to speak, just received a wonderful telephone call this afternoon from Sergeant Loelton from the 25th Marines, who are veterans, sending over a room detachment to be here. And of course, they'll be in their dress blues. Then of course, a parade or a ceremony like this is not really a parade or ceremony, unless you have Marines in their dress blues. And as you can tell, I'm proud of you. Uh, I just, I think this is wonderful. It all happened, uh, for the whole summer, if you want to hear. It all started a year and a half ago, at the Marine Corps birthday in Boston. And at the table that I was fortunate enough to sit with, with this gentleman. And he's talking, and he's telling me that after the service, he's going to Framingham State. And they're dedicating a room, though this is Michael Askey, why? No idea, because I never heard of him, nothing. So I went along, and in the conversation, I met the family. And it was talk about a plaque that we had in front of us. Smiley, it's going to look awful. But finally, it's covered with snow. And I imagine the fall is covered with leaves. So the Veterans Advisory Board said, we're going to take care of that. And with the help of Tom, Wyatt, you know, I hope you've all seen it, the new pedestal made out of granite. And this is why we wanted to do it, and make it a big thing. And I just hope everybody supports this, one reason alone, for the family that coming up from Virginia, they're all going to be here, his widow, his daughter, and his brother. And I would hate to think that they come up here and speak, standing 24 people. We want a big crowd, and I've already talked to Jeff about it, he might bring the family to the police department for this time, because we're getting a lot of publicity. I don't know if it's true, but I hear the glow of the fire. And that's mainly because of the Vice Commander that's going to be here, and of course, Dr. Sibaus. So that's the story, and I hope you see your way clear to do this. I have a funny feeling. That you're going to, very good.
Thank you very much.
I just want to extend, Andy, thank you very much. I just want to extend his comments to recognize the trustees of soldiers' memorials that worked with, um, the Veterans Advisory Board in support of raising, physically raising memorial. Looks great, um, and it was a, it was a great collaboration between two committees. And thank you to this board and the town for supporting that investment.
Okay, my, thank you, my other comments, then I will adjourn motion.
Sure, we have to make the motion, and move to declare July 31st, 2021 as Michael Askey.
Second. It moved in seconds, any further comments in discussion? Seeing none, we will take a vote, all in favor? Two and a half minutes, four to zero, four to one, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So some point, I guess we give just all the hint, we don't need to move right now.
Okay, so next time, the next topic in the agenda is, um, um, discussion of presentation from a person who's been related regarding musicians before they call on the state.
The town manager, remember? I think you have to, I think you want.
Oh, no, because it's not with Jeff, I'm sorry. So next time, is the, is the town manager.
Sorry.
But it's possible, I mean, it's just a word. So we'll fix it in possible.
Um, okay. Uh, so the, we wanted to announce that the Employee Excellence Award for June went to Cliff Rose. Uh, I'm sorry. Not Cliff Rose, Cliff, oh, Rose. Uh, Cliff has been described as exceptional in his care of the library. Um, he's a veteran, and to his pride, his work was well beyond his job description, helping the library run smoothly and safely, and is always concerned about how the public thinks about the building and grounds. Um, there's, there's some more there for the public to read. Um, also, I wanted to update the board, um, one of my goals had been to update the, um, the town bylaw, the general bylaw related to alcohol consumption on town property. Um, so I'm providing you with a draft of, um, an updated bylaw that's been reviewed by council. It's pretty simple, and so we'll put that on a future agenda. Uh, related to vacancies, uh, we have officially appointed Sherri Willis as our new conservation director, so she was our assistant conservation director, uh, that started several years ago, um, in the department as the administrative assistant. Um, she was interim conservation director, went into 2019, and again, when Jordan Carrick left earlier this spring. So we're excited to welcome Sherri to that position. Um, that we have also, the Board of Health has appointed a new public health director, Jen Sullivan, uh, who is currently the health agent in the Town of Webster. And so she'll be coming on board, uh, in the end of August. We definitely want to thank Ray for, um, his work as interim. Uh, the Budget Summit, we are planning for September, uh, this is, we had one, our first budget summit was in the fall of 2019, with the purpose of identifying budget pressures for the upcoming fiscal year at the start of the budget process. So this was a tri-board meeting between, uh, this board, the advisor committee, and the school committee. Last year, we pulled that due to COVID, but super different, I did a draft of a giant memo. Um, so we're proposing September 23rd at the summit for that meeting, which is a Thursday in September. Um, and so we're just waiting to hear back from, uh, members of all three boards. Uh, for department head updates, uh, the Board of Health had four new positive cases in the last five weeks, so remaining very low. Um, they're posting monthly reports, but they'll start posting weekly if there's a surge. Um, they also, uh, have closed the vaccination clinic, as we've reported previously, but they wanted to report that they vaccinated over 16,000 Massachusetts residents and approximately 2,100 of those were Westboro residents. Uh, the Board of Health recently went to the Finance Committee for a resort fund transfer. They had 28% increase in trash tonnage, um, which is, uh, unforeseen, uh, likely due to COVID. Uh, they also wanted to, um, share with us that what you'll see on the agenda later tonight is that they'll, will be pursuing that shared services grant or the public health IMI. Um, we expect to hire, assuming that it gets approved by all the towns, we'll hire a shared public health nurse in mid-August. Uh, in community development, um, they reported that Amazon Robotics, at 50 Otis Street, is planning on opening more of their facility in early August. Uh, the Coop, which is a new restaurant moving into 32 West Main Street, right next to Town Hall, has received a $10,000 grant from Mass State Beacon Store Friends Grant and an action grant through the EDC. Uh, also, Le Duke Art and Antiques has just opened at 5 Mill Street, and A3 Designs is scheduled to open early August in the arcade building, so they're in like a collective, so products. Um, and then DBW, Jared Kelly, Joe Jackman, Ed Bishop, Mike Shannon, Dennis Donovan, and Andrew Johnson supported the first United Methodist Church Fest on June 17th, so they brought out their equipment for a community event. Uh, they went to say Corey Anderson, Jean Purcell, and the, uh, Westboro Fire Department were supporting the DBW skills training, um, so they did some CPR, AED, employment, and hazmat recognition training. The annual drinking water report is posted through the DBW website, you can go there and go look at that. And the town has recently awarded two grants, the mass.share streets grant, which will fund crosswalk enhancements and sidewalk ramp installations at Mill Road and West Main Street, and West Main Veterans Park. And then the DER culvert replacement musical assistance grant, which will fund a consultant to identify how best to address culvert issues if they're worse than up to road intersection. Uh, and then the Planning Department, um, was noting the site plan approval of 4,400 computer drive, um, which was for Atlanta management on behalf of the Amazon for Fulfillment Center. Um, underneath the, the information about the approval is the mitigation the town received. So, um, I'll let, I'll let the public rate that, and this will be posted on the website. And then also 1,400 West Park Drive Site Plan Approval, which is for Master Plan for Now, um, which is the daytime surgical center and physicians' offices. And, um, again, mitigation is listed for the public. Uh, and the master plan is in its final phase right now, reviewing the implementation metrics. Uh, for the Police Department, the Westboro Police Department wants to acknowledge you congratulate you congratulate Detective Chip Dapley on being selected to speak at the National Conference for School Resource Officers. Uh, he was recognized with, for that organization for his service by awarding him the Exceptional Service Award and the Classroom Innovator Award. And then the Recorrigation Department, um, is planning a variety of events, including three summer, free summer concerts, a movie on the beach, and the block party, which is scheduled for the end of August. And then the town clerk, um, has written an update that they're taking up other records, continuing dog licensing. Uh, the street list should be delivered in July for distribution. Um, and then the Elections Division is sending updates regularly from the legislature related to changes for the 2022 election. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much. So now, next time agenda is the, uh, presentation about Columbus Day Indigenous People Day. Do I have a new chair?
I'm standing.
So it's up to you.
Um, I'm Kara Presley, and I am the Director of Youth and Family Services for the town. But I am here today in my capacity as the Chairperson of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. Um, on behalf of the Westboro Diversity and Inclusion Committee, I am recommending that the Westboro Select Board proclaim October 11, 2021 as Indigenous People's Day. In the place of the Columbus Day holiday, with a plan to formally institute the new holiday on the second Monday of October moving forward, we do recognize that two-year may be required to make the necessary changes to town calendars, contracts, and other documents, which would make the annual holiday official in October of 2022. So the Diversity and Inclusion Committee has taken great care and effort over the past year to learn about Indigenous People's Day. We have consulted with the founder of Indigenous People's Day Massachusetts, a group of Indigenous people who have worked with cities and towns across the Commonwealth to educate about Indigenous People's Day. We've learned about legislative efforts to make Indigenous People's Day a statewide holiday, and we have researched the actions of other municipalities and states towards changing the holiday. At this point, 14 states, Buzzard District, Naperville, and more than 130 US cities observe Indigenous People's Day instead of Columbus Day, including, um, 16 Massachusetts municipalities. And I'm not sure that the Massachusetts towns are all included in that 130 number. I think those are large cities that are counted. Um, and right now, there is current legislation in front of Massachusetts House and Senate proposing that the Commonwealth adopt a statewide holiday, the statewide holiday as well. Our own Westboro Public School Committee also recently voted to replace the current holiday with Indigenous People's Day on all school calendars. Our committee has also heard from Westboro residents advocating for and against the establishment of Indigenous People's Day. You have seen letters of support in your packets from the Westboro Committee for Anti-Racism in Education, also known as WE Care, and from Westboro residents Sarah McCabe, Brandon Tuminsky, and Nigel Cobertino, who led efforts behind a petition that was signed by 300 people over a year ago, Westboro residents, in favor of the town's recognition of Indigenous People's Day as replacement of Columbus Day. Through our learning and conversations, the Diversity and Inclusion Committee voted with confidence to recommend Westboro's Declaration of Indigenous People's Day. By instituting the new holiday, we will publicly celebrate and raise awareness about the cultural and his, the culture and history of Indigenous people. By replacing Columbus Day, we honor the perseverance of Indigenous people despite their suffering at the hands of European colonists led by Columbus, who overtook inhabited lands and committed genocide of Indigenous people. Replacing Columbus Day is not an erasure of the history of the religious and ethnic discrimination and violence that was experienced by Italian-Americans, who deserve our recognition and honor. But it is a disassociation from Columbus, a man known to have committed atrocities against Indigenous people that would today likely be considered crimes against humanity. As part of our committee's recommendation to you, we are proposing to educate the community about the history and rationale for establishing Indigenous People's Day and the decision to replace Columbus Day. If this Select Board votes, um, to affirm the new Indigenous People's Day holiday, our committee is prepared to launch a community-wide education series, inviting all Westboro to learn with us. Our education plan includes the following components. Um, the details are outlined in the original, my original letter to you, which is in your packet. Um, and we are prepared to hold three education sessions to be delivered to the public this fall at different locations, central of the community, at various town halls to accommodate a variety of community members. And we plan to amplify the language interpretation and translating materials as needed. The education sessions will be widely promoted to encourage participation. Will utilize social media, the town website, library communications, digital billboards, school communications, and will invite other organizations to help with the promotion as they wish. We will consult with local historians and cultural resources, um, including some Indigenous people who have offered to support the education, um, in order to prepare the promotional and educational material. And we are hoping to include public service announcements to, um, redevelop with Westboro TV. The session's content will include an explanation of the basis for the holiday change and will speak to the history of Indigenous people as part of Westboro's history. And our outreach to promote the education series will target specific community organizations and groups to encourage participation and gain support, and will be particularly directed to those groups that have a vested interest in the topic, whether for or against, um, the change of the holiday. In honor of the Indigenous people who lived on this land long before us and in solidarity with the Indigenous people who are an integral part of the Westboro community today, your vote to proclaim Indigenous People's Day holiday in Westboro will be deeply appreciated and respected. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring down to the board for any questions. Shelby?
So, sure, as the board's lead is on to the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, I'm not going to repeat anything that Kara already presented. Uh, as a committee, we voted unanimously to, um, support the, um, changes Kara's outlined. Um, I think that, um, it's important that, um, that we recognize the need to change. Sorry, Shelby. I think it's important that we recognize the need to change, um, and for all the reasons that Kate stated. I also think that, um, the board has an opportunity between now and potentially this August meeting to hear from the public, both in support and against, and then place its vote at that time. So I think, you know, I, I, um, this change has, um, been widely supported by a number of residents. But as with all things, we sort of, I think democracy doesn't want to move as fast as we want it to. So I think by allowing a couple more weeks for a few act to come through, we'll give the board fair representation of kind of how the community is feeling so that we can make our decision. But I am in support of this. I, um, I think it's the right thing to do. I'm not all that more.
Any other questions?
Um, I don't know whether I have questions, comment. You know, I think this is something that is, you know, clearly a lot of states and towns moving forward on, and it's, it seems to be where things are going. I, you know, I will take this opportunity over the next few weeks to also educate myself a little bit more about it to make sure that I can provide an informed vote in our next meeting.
Uh, yeah, I would echo, uh, Sean, your sentiments there. Um, I, I am a supporter of Indigenous People's Days and, you know, recognition of all cultures. So I definitely think that's important to be, or inclusive of these cultural, um, organizations and the history of those cultures. Uh, I guess, you know, I watched the, I went to attend the meeting yesterday. You know, just watching earlier this afternoon, it helped. So thank you very much to, you know, the Diversity and Inclusion Committee for doing all the work and leading into this. I guess my only question coming out of that, and I apologize if you said it now, was during the research period over the last year, did you all, I know that you got feedback from opposition, had a recent feedback, an email, or not, um, or was there any opportunity provided to those groups to come forward or committee and speak about, you know, in person to the committee to, to, you know, position themselves above the, you know, just the letters that they sent in. And if not, I just wonder if there's an opportunity between now and our next vote obviously forth to do that.
So we did not explicitly invite people to come and state their opinions for or against, um, this motion. We were originally approached by Sarah McCabe on behalf of that group of people who put together the petition. So it was people in support that came forward to us that started this process of us looking at this. Um, we have had televised meetings throughout the whole pandemic. We have made very public the opportunity for people to email me, to call me. We have offered that people can, you know, if planned in advance, be put on the agenda. So while we haven't had any dedicated forums to this topic, there had been ample opportunity for folks to come forward and make their, um, opinions and ideas, and to ask questions. Um, and just to note that the two letters that they received that are in your packet in opposition, as far as I understand, those are not from Westboro residents. Um, I did receive two phone calls from residents who were in opposition, but otherwise, I haven't received any written opposition from residents.
Sure. Um, so it is a really interesting issue. I'll be frank with this board. I'm looking forward to kind of learning from the community and learning what the conversations are, because I don't like to go to any, any vote like this uneducated. So I look forward to reading more, learning more, and hearing more. Um, I am struggling right now. My perspective on this is, is one of which, you know, diversity and inclusion. And it seems like this kind of, um, tends more towards exclusion of the Italian-American community. Uh, in doing some very basic research on this, there were a lot of the language we've used in the letters, a lot of the language that was used in 1896 when our President Harrison, at the time, actually instituted Columbus Day. Um, it was because of the discrimination against the Italian community at that time. So I, I just, um, I, I look forward to learning more, hearing more, and I'm undecided at this point. So, um, I do appreciate all the work you all, you know, have done. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, um, knowing that you got a couple, we definitely received communication and support from a couple of residents with concerns or opposition. Um, you know, my thought on this process would be, um, to, um, not indicate what you did vote today, but to give it a glance to unfortunately, this would get members of the public to come to you, contact by the Diversity and Inclusion Committee or through the Select Board at town. We have Westboro, we have any, any of us, uh, with any perspective or opinion they have on this. Um, and we can, um, we have opportunity to read those in advanced meeting and include those in record. Um, additional people who are interested in addressing the board, uh, we have that opportunity to vote for at that meeting as well. And so, um, my thought is that we'll head in that direction.
Um, may I offer one more comment?
Sure.
Okay. Um, I think the, the piece of the research that we did that really persuaded our group to unanimously vote in this regard, for this recommendation, was hearing directly from Indigenous people. And I think that when you think about the persecution, the discrimination, um, that many groups, ethnic and cultural and religious groups in the United States have experienced, I am not, I have no interest in comparing suffering. That does no one any good. And I want to recognize the disproportionate, um, well, I mean, frankly, the genocide experience by Indigenous people that raises this to the level that it has taken nationwide. Not to discount the discrimination of Italian-Americans, not to discount the history of them being othered in this country, as have so many other ethnic groups. Um, it is the specific association with Columbus and Columbus's history. And you will see, as you do your own research, that there are varying experiences and opinions from Italian-Americans specifically, but from the whole country about sort of, was this true about Columbus? Was this not? Was, you know, to what degree were Italians, um? There's, there's a lot of deliberation about what the real history is, and you have to figure out for yourself, you know, what you think the real history is. But I think the important thing for me, and I can't speak on behalf of why my fellow committee members voted the way they did, but it wasn't again. So it really was a persuasion of when a huge, when the original inhabitants of this place that we live were really annihilated the way that they have been. And that there is an opportunity here to honor that history, to raise to awareness a culture that, I mean, we really just don't learn a lot about, um, curiously, but not as a, as a culture of focus. This is an, it's an opportunity to really honor that history and that pain and the perseverance and resilience of, um, of people incredibly diverse that, that we haven't given enough homage to. So I just wanted to leave you with that thought.
Thank you, Kara. So I, I think that Kara and I have talked candidly about this. I think there's always a challenge when there's an exchange, this for that, right? So we have co-instituted established in the United States as a federal holiday. Um, many community states have made a change, but it remains as it is. I'm, I'm not a statistician, but I bet if we set it in a booth outside on any given day and said to folks, what does Columbus Day need to do? There are probably a lot of Italian-Americans and others that would say, well, it needs this. And, and there's a national tie to their ancestry. But I would bet a lot of money that there are a lot of people, like the far majority that would go, I don't know. He kind of sailed over here and, you know, I think he lived in America, but I'm not really sure, which by the way, he never did. But the America as we know it is in the United States, and it's a day off in the fall. It's a long weekend. So, um, so I personally don't, um, I don't sort of buy this like, um, attachment to Columbus Day from an Italian-American connection, but I welcome that conversation. I understand it better. Um, I, I think the, again, the exchange from one day for another makes a challenge. If Indigenous, if Indigenous People's Day was to be August, excuse me, October, you know, 10th, you know, on every year, would, would we even be having this conversation? I'm not, you know, I'm not sure of the procedural part of this. So, um, that's for me is, is for the board to contemplate. I do want to be clear, Kara sort of inferred this, but didn't state this explicitly that, um, from the Indigenous People's Day movement, if you will, um, and proponents of it, um, it is not a day that they feel that can be shared. So it's not a day that can be like, um, to do the day justice, if you will. You can't sort of have Columbus Day and slash Indigenous People's Day. Now, some communities have done that. Um, and that certainly is up for us as a board to determine, but that would not be the preference of proponents who have kind of, you know, brought this forward. Um, because they feel like it's, um, for lack of a better word, sharing kind of, uh, a day with the person who, um, you know, inflicted great harm to their people. Um, I would also say that, um, you know, if we were discussing Mifah Erickson Day, which we don't celebrate here, I'd probably have a different opinion because he actually came here. He actually was here well before Columbus. Um, and I'm not sure if I was the country that was celebrating, but they probably didn't have enough, um, political will and power back in the day to create this holiday. And it was created by political parties as part of the recognition. So do you think that some, the board needs to undertake that research? Um, but I also think equally, we need to recognize Westboro's roots for Indigenous people. And it's, you know, kind of that they are very much, have always been a fabric for our community. And, um, um, you know, and understand the harm that has been done to people as a whole in that part. So I think so.
Can I respond to that? So, yes, absolutely. I agree. So all, yes, absolutely, a lot of great, very valid points, and I think that's what I'm looking forward to learn more, not necessarily to counter.
Yes.
I'm not looking to be, I'm just looking to learn. But I'll just mention, you know, again, when Harrison put together Columbus Day back in the early 1800s, full disclosure, my grandfather immigrated here from Italy just a few years after that happened. And it leads me to wonder whether or not he would have immigrated here if he hadn't fought the Balkan. And at that particular time, you know, Italians, Irish, you know, they were the lowest of the, do not, do not, I'm, you know, Irish, in a lot of, a lot of cases aren't in the country, it's the same for the Italians. So what I'm really sensitive to is the removal of one in, in light of the other. I think there is room for all. You look at the county state calendar on holidays, you look at the federal calendar on holidays and on days of observation, every day has something, right? And I, and I do have, you know, questions that I have, I'm really looking to reserve those when we can have a vote. But I'll, I'll just mention that just the fact that folks may not necessarily be aware of, there's, you know, there is a National American Indian Month, which is in November, and there's a National American Indian Day, which is in November.
On Friday.
Yeah, I know, that's a whole other issue. I get it, I'm, I'm really curious.
No, not a lot of time to anyone. Yes, we discussed that agreement.
Yeah, I would love to see that moved, because I don't think that's the right place, but that's a whole other, yeah. So, but my, my bigger point is this, is that when you look at why that month and why that day was put together, it's exactly, to my knowledge, the same reason why this is being requested. So I would, I would wonder as to whether or not, what is the difference? What is the unique need of Indigenous Peoples' Day or Native American Day that requires us to have a separate holiday? And there may be very valid reasons, I would like to understand that. And then I'd like to understand why they need, again, to counsel, to cancel an ethnic, you know, it is an observed Italian holiday, it's very precious to that community. Why, why remove that one in light of another? Why can't both exist? So that's, that's what I'm trying to.
So now we have time to delve into the research, your comments for the community. Thank you very much, Kara, for your presentation, for the additional commentary. And we will have this on our August 24th agenda. And so again, we welcome the public to send us some mails, as well as people wanting to address this, the use of their open forum at that meeting.
So Alan, we just asked that through you as chair, that depending upon, not unlike other, I'll say, popular topics, sometimes controversial topics, that when we've received significant feedback, regardless of the position of that feedback, this board has been so inclined to have a more public discussion, whether it's a forum or a hearing or something. So at some, at some point through you as chair, depending on the feedback we get, which we can have before our August meeting, we might consider that of having a separate meeting specific for this, depending on kind of the community feedback.
Absolutely.
Because I guess one of my concerns would be if there are, if there are.
If, if the board want to discuss the topic, where open forum wouldn't be sufficient, then we have a couple of options, we can open up the agenda for discussion. That's one model. And then another model, which they staff, would be plain, secondary publicity. You know, there's a, there's a matter of process on this. This, this change effectively would change the name of that holiday on time calendars and employment policy and, you know, through the contract process, which I'm arguing is, as such, it's maxed, they definitely would, that we need to know when we're going to tell meeting and promote. So it's, it is the purview of this, of this board's, we can get, to see, you know, with the, with the public hearing on the town still is a definite understanding that it's a taxure change, it's something else to tell meeting that, that public hearing that results in a more talented meeting, decide that process was appropriate. We will measure that, we'll monitor the feedback, we'll measure that, adapt as appropriate. Anything else? Okay, moving on. Thank you very much. And please extend the board's gratitude to the entire community, for the amount of work you have to get us to this point, was part of the conversation. Thank you. So next on the agenda is an intermunicipal agreement for public health services.
So the, so the board is aware of this, which was about it in several meetings. The board had voted to, to execute a letter of commitment that was needed for this grant. So this is an intermunicipal agreement, the towns of Northborough, Southborough, Boyleston for Public Health Shared Services. It'll be hosted through the town of Northborough, but funded through the Public Health Shared Services grant. It's a, presently it's a three-year grant, terms of grant. And so through this, through this grant, the town of Westboro would be receiving some backup inspection services, but more inevitably, some additional public health nurse services. And so this, I, an intermunicipal agreement that's required was developed through collaboration with all of those communities, as well as the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. And the Board of Health at their meeting, that started at 5:30 tonight, voted to execute it, and we would also need your vote to author as the Chair of the Board to execute.
Any questions or comments?
So, Chris, if I understood the contract correctly, the, a number of hours that Westboro would receive through certain, you know, services that are outlined in the contract is not specified? It's, it, there was, there's a section in here that says that some of those details will be worked out. Can you speak to that a little bit? Well, so Section 6B says, specifies, it gets into some specifics around the town inspector, and it talks about, it's under host town, I'm sorry.
Right, so, so Section 6 is specifically about the town of Northborough and what the responsibilities are in the agreement, because they're hosting the, the regional program.
Right, so 6B, 6A, little numbers I, 1, 2, and 3, talks about the nursing commitment by the host town, but it doesn't specify number of hours.
Well, 6, right, so 6B says that they're going to, that they're going to increase the inspection hours in Northborough from seven to 32, and then the towns of Boyleston, Southborough will receive it. So Westboro, because we have more inspections down, they, you know, part of the discussion and part of what the town of Westboro or health wanted was that we would just receive some backup inspection services. So really, for us, the benefit is more around the public health nurse.
So, so maybe I missed out. So 6A, number, 6A, I, one, I, one, two Is, three Is. Speaks to nurses, and it talks about holding office hours, collaborating with schools. And then it says the shared nurse contract will be developed and negotiated by Northborough in coordination with other towns. So I guess, I'm just trying to understand how many hours of nursing, it doesn't specify here.
Right, so I don't, so I don't have the answer because it's not specified here. The, the way that the agreement is written is that it has to be created on by the board, and the town of Westboro, each town has one vote. So if they're, for some reason, we felt that we were being underserved by the program that they would have a meeting. So, but in addition to that, the board will meet accordingly to address the concerns. So I think part of that is because different towns have different levels of existing budgeting, budgeted nursing services. Because the grant is very specific that you cannot use for budgeted items you already have, and it can only extend your services, I expect that that's part of what they need to negotiate as they're working through it.
So when you hear you say that each town is participating in this agreement, sort of has a, potentially has the ability through the board that will oversee this agreement, the opportunity to customize its services based on what the community needs within, again, everybody in the board.
Yep.
Okay. And this is zero budgetary impact for Westboro.
Correct.
Because of the shared services.
Right, so it's funded explicitly by the grant, and I should add that it's, it's also meeting a need that was identified in the staffing study, which was the need for public health nurse.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, I'll, I'll do the motion. I'll make a motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement for local public health services. A second. No further discussion on camera. Then take a vote, all favor. Passes 4-0, for being present. Okay, moving on, there is an intermunicipal agreement for plumbing inspection services.
So as some of you may, may remember, in February of 2019, we actually entered into an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Shrewsbury for backup wiring inspection, inspection services. And so that was an agreement that would last a year, but would be, would continue each year by mutual agreement of the two communities for a period enough to exceed 25 years. And so we, we implemented that, that's worked out well for us, it's very similar to the agreement we have with Shrewsbury, backup animal control, where there's no cost, but there's the ability to back each other up as needed. And then recently, we started, we started more informally providing backup plumbing inspection services, providing and receiving through the town of Shrewsbury. And so we've worked, we've amended the agreement to include the plumbing inspection services. You know, this is a benefit to the residents, so that if someone is on vacation, it's a benefit to residents and the commercial, so someone's on vacation, we are handling up projects we have availability with backup inspection services. So it's worked well, and we would like to continue that.
Okay. Just a question, it's been a little while since I pulled building permits and packing that, building permits and plumbing permits. We had multiple wiring inspectors, multiple plumbing inspectors, will we down to one each, is that, excuse me, 10, probably? That's why we need this, is the.
Right, so we have, yeah, so we have one full-time plumbing inspector, so 40 hours a week, and then we have a 28-hour a week wiring inspector.
Just to mention that this is definitely needed, in my perspective, knowing how much work is probably wrong for that department.
Any other questions?
Just from a liability and employment responsibility, I was thinking, just for the public's benefit, speak to how that works, so our inspectors, or even Shrewsbury, and so on and so forth.
Right, so our, so when our inspectors are working in the town of Shrewsbury, there's still employees in the town of Westboro, and so they're still covered, you know, by workers' comp through the town, they're still covered insurance through the town. And that's also true with other, usually a typical group that we have, as well as the animal control.
And so, and so I think liability for their decisions, fall back to Westboro, or, you know, partly in Westboro, so to Shrewsbury.
Okay.
Let's move back to you. Move the question.
We just took a little break.
All right, we do it, sure. I move to approve the intermunicipal agreement for wiring and plumbing inspection services.
One second.
No further discussion on camera. Move to the vote, all favor. 4-2-0, wait, do you have a second? Passes 4-0, for being present. Next on the agenda is discussion, um, to end the classification of the improved jobs for patients, the first being the grants procurement officer.
So one of the, one of the goals of the board that gave me was to review the need for the grants administrator or procurement officer. These were, the procurement officer specifically was called out in the staffing study, but we also heard from the advisory finance committee that they were interested in seeing some grant, some specific grant oversight by a specified physician. And so, so in looking to chief of schools, we looked at sort of the level of work that comes in, in the finance office related to these two things. So, you know, our finance director is here, Leah looked back, in FY '21, we had just under 200 purchase orders for items or services over $10,000, thereby requiring some level of procurement activities, so that's why that, that $10,000 mark is significant. And then we had over 40, we had 41 grants that were managed by the town, totaling approximately $6.5 million, which does not include the anticipated ARPA money that we've talked about, which is an additional $5.7 million. So in looking at this, you know, we, we feel that we can create a full-time position, a much-needed position, someone who can really focus on procurement, unlike some other positions, this position will really create capacity across the entire town, because right now departments do their own procurement and grants administration. And then also, as we're looking forward to the ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan money that we're going to receive, we know that there's a significant amount of reporting requirements that will be required to do over the four years that we'll be receiving those funds and using those funds. And so, you know, we see this position as, you know, more important now than ever. And so in creating the position, the responsibilities are the grants administration, also the procurement. You know, we've, we've shared this with our senior leadership team, who are very excited about the possibility of having this position come on board. We ran the position through our, the requirements that we use for knowing new positions, to see where it would fall, and so we're recommending it as S6, which is similar in level to our, some of our department has, recreation, youth and family, senior center, and others. And, you know, so the approximate salary, or salary range is $72,000 to $96,000, looking at other communities, this is really where we're seeing this position advertised at, and we're starting to see the position being created, and I think these are the reasons I just gave. And so we would like to advertise the position immediately. Obviously, there's not a current budget for the position, but we, it is an eligible cost for use of the CARES Act money. And so the remaining CARES Act money, we could use to fund the position through the end of the calendar year, and that's what we'd be, that's what we're recommending, be the funding source. The balance of the fiscal year could either come out of the ARPA money, the American Rescue Plan money, or we could choose to request the additional funds at the October town meeting. And so that's something that we can determine at a later date, if you choose to go ahead and approve this position.
Do you have a motion?
I will, we do a motion. Just a couple of questions, so just a comment here, when I was running for office and then with the Department, it's where I was elected, and several of them mentioned the desire for a separate position. So this is really, I think, needed, and I'm glad to see it here in front of us. I guess too, too much of you mentioned that the entire town, is this school also going to be able to manage this as well?
So this school, and Leah can probably think this better than I can, but because the, the school's purchase orders do run through the, the finance office and Leah's office, they would have a relationship with the school. But they do have a procurement officer also on this side of the street, with actually the new director of Finance Administration, D. Gordon.
Okay, and I guess one of these, I don't think it's a good sense, and, and, you know, I think that the community would love to understand is, is the opinion and vital reductions for all the departments, and those departments to do this work, and not even centralizing?
It's a, it's a tough question, but it's, it's different for, for different departments. I mean, we have some departments that do maybe one or two procurements a year, and so they'll really find the solution valuable, because they're not doing it all the time. so they'll really find the solution valuable because they're not doing it all the time, whereas we have others like the DPW, which does a significant amount. And then, and then we have departments that receive a ton of grants, I think we've heard the DPW, we heard from the fire department, they receive a lot of grants, others might not receive them as often. But I think that initially, we see this position spending a lot of time on the American Rescue Plan grants, and so, you know, it's likely that they'll create even more capacity once that reporting period is over.
Sure. Thank you. A definite will create efficiency, but also enhances the finance department's centralized expertise in resources. So even early in the process, when planning is happening, the resource to solve and understand the procurement process, we can, some efforts in town has started along the way without , oh, there is that process, and that can create more headaches than it wants. And particularly, you know, realizing the burden of the American Rescue Plan, you sort of walk the burden because of funds, right? After having increased capacity, knowing that there are resources available that, you know, we hopefully never hit a spot where we say, oh, there's this grant, and I'm fine, it's a life, you know, there are times, right? Or this grant came up with a really short, you know, and there were the resources to pursue it. You know, I like all the people's money to help pay for things in town, and so I think it'll be a great benefactor. Uh, do you have a motion?
Sure. I vote that the board, I'm sorry, I move to amend the classification plan to include grants administrator slash procurement officer position S6 in the finance department, and to further approve the job description as proposed.
Second. Any additional questions or discussion?
I just have a comment. Yeah, so I think this is a critically needed position, so thank you to me and Christine Kim and Alison Lam for bringing it forward. I think that while it's always concerning to add an unbudgeted position, I think that, and I would love to see these sort of reports following this position, so a positive vote from the board that sort of show how this position pays for itself. I think, I haven't been in a meeting yet where we discussed any sort of purchase or study or engineering, where someone didn't ask, is there a grant for that? So, and I know that Leah, that's squarely on her broad shoulders right now, so it's absolutely needed, at least the facilitation, you know, and departments are using resources that could otherwise be any more efficiently or effectively used to do what they do. So this further professionalizes our amazing town staff, and there are a lot of initiatives that are coming, you know, that will come forward, whether it's from the climate action plan, economic development, you know, enhancing safety, what have you, that I can see this person being very busy with. So, and I love the idea, I know with a position like this, being more or less reactive, I think we've done a very good job over the past one years, but you have a person that is sort of right there and a known contact and a resource for all the staff, so it's great, thank you.
No further questions, comments? I'll move, bring it to vote, all the favor. Passes, motion passes, number four to zero, for being present. Next is the program volunteer coordinator and conservation assistant job description.
All right, we have two positions that we're taking a look at again, as we have some turnover. So the first one we can look at is the senior centers program and volunteer, what we're proposing to be the program and volunteer coordinator. This both expands and updates the existing volunteer coordinator position. So it adds the whole programming capacity and access to the job description. This is, I think, what you see in many senior centers, a typical evolution of this position, particularly the day and age with the hard programming that you see in senior centers, and the, many of the functions are administrative, programming support, and are intended to take some of that load off of the senior center director at this point. It does keep some of the volunteer coordination activities, but I think it becomes more heavily focused on the programming side. You do have a marked-up copy in your packet, just one thing I did want to point out with the additional duties and the expansion of the role, we have proposed that it be increased, be reclassified as an N13 position, so it has a higher pay grade. This is also a union position. The clerical union has reviewed the position in its agreement with the proposed changes to the functions, as well as the change to the job code.
Well, a lot of any questions on this one? We'll do the next one with the motions and votes together. So, any questions?
That's a great decision. Some questions, let's see.
The questions are coming. It's a lot of them.
Now, this is a great, this is a great announcement, and I think it will help our, you know, help the director, Alma, to play and show the recording, a lot of the programming, and it's great timing as well, as we have a COVID, uh, wood, to, you know, bring more and more programs back in, you know, so.
You have a quick question, sorry, quick question. Did the council any comment on second job position?
We worked through the director.
Yeah, and then over to help the seniors and 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 the seniors[1332.82] So thank you to those of you creating this and running it and doing all the work. If you guys stand up, then it's a vote. So I'm happy when we can vote. If there are any comments or questions, seeing none, we can vote. All in favor? Vote is four to zero, four being present. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is policies. And tonight, first one is the flags and signs on the rotary. And I will hand the vote over to Patrick.
All right, so thank you, Alan. I will just first comment, I think we should probably try to attack this in a universal order, just because the sign policy is a little bit shorter, so we'll get ourselves warmed up to the flag policy, if that makes sense.
Fine.
Go everywhere. I also suggest that we had a little bit of kind of a good free-for-all type of conversation the last time we met about this. I'd like to suggest that we kind of go through it section by section and just, you know, take each section, take feedback on it, and then we'll see what we can. And then first, I guess procedurally, how do we address, you know, if there's a debate about a particular point in the policy, how do we, do we go to a vote on that before we put it in, or how do we, how do we move through this process?
I think we discuss to reach consensus to make the amendment and we vote on the policies.
Okay. Get consensus and then move.
Yeah.
Okay. Our goal is to try to vote on these tonight and see how it goes. Okay, so on the signs on the rotary policy, section one, first of all, first sentence here, signs on the rotary, in two adjacent island green spaces are permitted as follows. Official town notices through town manager approval. Is any questions on section one?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So could you explain the addition of one F?
So there was, I believe, a comment when we last met about other types of notices at the town manager might be needed for the community. And I think the opinion was that we need to leave some flexibility in the policy to allow her to approve things that are explicitly called out, but yet don't need to come into the board.
So my view of this is that... Do you want to, do we want to discuss these points now, or?
I think so. It's probably under section one.
So the... I guess I'm just, I don't know, I guess I'm concerned with relinquishing that authorization, excuse me, not authorization, relinquishing the approval process by the board for anything that's not stated in A through B.
So these are, again, official town notices, not other types of signage. So this is an example here, we voted on a few months ago.
Is that, I'm sorry, is official town notice defined?
I think anything that comes from the town, specific to a department's notice or warning or communications we're referring to here, if we need to define that, we can certainly put that in.
So the reason why I bring this up, because it's specifically stated as an example in the policy Veterans Advisory Board. So given that the Veterans Advisory Board is a department, and given that they have routinely come forward, this board for approval of the placement of the signs, excuse me, the signs and the flags, how would, would that be considered an official notice, or would that be, is that, they're a committee, they're a department? I don't know if that changes anything. Okay, so if that's the case, then that example shouldn't be included.
So we can put that, you're suggesting that that would be put down in the other signage?
Well, so to Christie's point, one half says other town department notices, right? On that, the board is a committee, not a department. Okay.
So you just, so the example wasn't listed out, so you just remove it?
Right. So thank you, yeah, thank you for working through that, because I think, because I think we did have that conversation on other committees and what other things that might find that way.
Yeah. Department specific, I think that's a valid point.
I can see, you know, separate department instances, right? It'll be appropriate. As a manager, so.
And just anecdotally, as I was driving here tonight, I saw the water ban was signed as well, yet just before I left, I noticed I was watching the news and it was just reported that month of July is the wettest month of July on record, and the fourth wettest month in Massachusetts history.
It does not necessarily mean that we can lift the water. That bubble gas on it, the water ban is supposed to...
The logage.
Measurements flow the acid.
Exactly.
Until those measurements taken and changed.
Right.
D E P, not our town, or the state says, you don't have to, everything's fine, then we define. Okay, section two.
Section two, other signage, displays of other objects that do not require select board approval. Any questions on this section?
You have a question? So it says here can be placed not staked.
So you're talking about to be, single sign can be placed and not staked. So the intent there is do not stake the ground, as in do obviously damage the turf on the rotary or the adjacent green spaces?
So just be leaning on something, or you have something propping it on?
Yeah, or you can weight it, for example, something that could have, I think of those public tents, not that I'm suggesting the public tents are there, but they have the weights that go around the ankles of the tents, very to hold it up. That would be something that someone can use to securely design without damaging the turf on the rotary. Questions?
So.
Go ahead.
So this is going to be a very simple comment throughout. And just sort of, the word is there, I think, I provide comments to Christine and Patrick. So I'm sort of fundamentally opposed to any sort of semi-permanent sign on the rotary, just because I worry about the management of it, the cluttering of it, and I don't want to go off like the game plan here to review this policy. But so, you know, when I look at two, number two, I think it just, I really worry about the management of this. So we have competing religious displays, so Christmas and Hana, right, generally overlap. Quanli, I think, is somewhere in there, although I think that's...
Quanli.
Right. So, I mean, I just, I think we're, and it's a, remains a confusing place for people to navigate, and we put distractions in the rotary, I just, I think it's unnecessary. And then we have our electronic signboard at East Bean in Lyman. We have the banner that we've talked about that is underutilized across Bean Street that, you know, organizations can utilize, we have a policy for that. I think any sign that is left unattended really doesn't, we don't, we don't need it.
So, okay, Shelby, I completely understand your concern. I guess my, my thought on that is the can of worms that was opened, right? We have a Christmas tree that's already out there, the Hana, the order goes out each year. Are you suggesting that we wouldn't allow any of that in that form?
So I don't want to be having a Christmas tree.
Well, decorated with Christmas lights.
The whole downtown area is decorated with lights, and it is never green, so I guess, I would say it's a Christmas tree, because it doesn't star, I don't know if we can do that, right? I mean, I guess the tree would decorate with the same color lights as the silver, so it's straight up, as my tree, you know, it's probably your tree, maybe your tree. Yes, I am suggesting, I am suggesting that no religious displays would not be on the rotary. I mean, I'm not saying this because I'm Christian, but the trees are there, we do decorate the downtown lights. But adding things to the rotary that are not there as a permanent structure, I just, I don't, I just don't think we need it. I think the town is beautiful in and of itself, and I don't think the rotary is the place to do it. There are other places to celebrate and display information.
Yeah, remind me, does the show up at the light display?
Yes, so historically in the past, there has been a, well, more recent years, there's been a parade, and yes, it shows up.
Yeah, that seems like a tough one to get around.
Seven? Oh.
And also, because I just remind you.
Well, in the rotary, I would either, so the rotary typically had, the rotary club and up, the rotary has had its stand, and it says, it says, "Happy Holidays," it doesn't say "Christmas," but it does say "Happy Holidays" with the influence of it's celebrating Christmas. So if that stand were to be there, I mean, that would be a whole other discussion, but I am, I am saying that there should be any, you know, signs.
So that, I actually forgot, and that's actually something that, which under section two C does, if it falls underneath that religious, religious day celebration is a celebration of these. So if you're accepting that, and you're accepting the...
I'm saying it doesn't, I know, I'm saying actually, you know, not...
You're saying no?
I'm saying it doesn't need to be at the rotary, it could be someplace else. It could be in the state commons, you know, whatever, I'm saying at the rotary, I just think, for me, the rotary is a dangerous place these days.
Yeah, there's other things.
Right, right, and so that's my, that really is my concern. My secondary concern is managing it, and how many signs do we have at one given time, given, as you just said, in our indigenous people's setting. There are, you know, you look at an observation calendar, and it's like every day is something, right? And so, how many signs are we going to have up there? And I just, maybe it's just not...
I'm not opposed to be saying...
No, no, that's why, that's my, that's my concern.
So, you know, my view from a policy standpoint, obviously, the town notices aren't over there. And we understand that, you know, we have sound policy, right? So oftentimes, some allow signage to, the rotary actually did, I don't know, it was the one time a sign was, the D E P was in the East Bay trial, with that visibility, so it's fairly limited. You know, clearly, you know, individuals holding information, not advertising signs, candidates, office, free speech, causes, free speech issue, would not be staffed, but getting the other replacement signs and remain when someone's not COVIDed, or other objects I'm chatting against now, you know, in agreement that there are other places for those types of community celebrations, right? My, you know, my concerns specific to the board, nor is it the organization last year, last year, how the organization that was up the board set the letter agreeing to abide by town's social restrictions in respect of mask and social distance and handling food, and that participated or proceeded to not follow any of those guidelines during their vet. And so, you know, that's a whole side issue. But again, we have other opportunities for those types of signs, and we're going to deal with that by exception. Some people are compelled, the board is the only place for that object or that sign when they should come to the board, select board. Because having policies is my default, so I would...
So. So if I'm hearing you correctly, Alan, are you suggesting that section two C created another section called other signage that requires a select board approval?
And I would say, you know, other signage, you have A, and that, everything else just falls to the exception clauses.
Okay, so remove...
Maybe not allowed on this policy, maybe not for, maybe not, you know, for the select board consideration.
Okay, so remove, remove section two C, that therefore the expectation is that anybody who does have a sign that falls into that category would have to come through the process to select board for review and...
Yeah. And I would remove two C as well.
But with the intent of bringing it before the board.
Right.
Not to say it from above, but for the board to hear what they...
Okay, so Sean, did you have any thoughts on that, before I start to strike?
I think I'm okay with that. I think maybe we, you know, do a review a year, three year handling, you know, three of these that we're needing, and then we review it again, but I, you know, I think I'm okay with that. We've certainly seen an uptick this year because of COVID and people not able to, you know, use the mechanisms they used to use to celebrate some of these holidays, ask if they can use the rotary, and we'll see if that falls back next year.
Um, I'm...
Oh, sorry.
I just, I see, I put my concern in the packet about the exception sections of the policies, but I think it's equal, equally speaks to what you were just talking about doing here, where instead of creating a policy that says what the board is, you know, will allow and will not allow, we're sort of saying, you can come to us and then we'll make a decision kind of without, without any document or any guidance on which, for a basis on which to make the decision. I think that the board should create a policy, and we should be able to follow it, and certainly if we say no per the policy and someone pushes back, you know, we could bring them before you if that's, you know, where we end to that, but ultimately, the purpose of the policy is to say what you will allow, what you won't allow, or what you will allow, and then assume that everything else is not allowed. So I think, you know, if the policy just says you can come to the board and we'll take it up at that time, I just, I don't think that you as board members have any sort of guidance on where to make the decision. And I also think that given the discussions we've had about length of meetings, you could end up with, with these items on multiple agendas.
So we think that's where we're headed, is we're removing or making, or I'll say a lot of ways to love is allowed, and then anything that is not allowed, I think there's to your point, go through the process, because it's explicitly not allowed, or say it's not stated as being allowed.
How many of these have we, I mean, I'm going back over about four years of my tenure in board, as it relates to requests, I can offhand and I didn't prepare this, think of maybe three.
Yeah, I would say, sorry, I would say that every year, the Veterans Advisory Board comes before you go through the question of the flags. You, the only things that I can remember are really COVID specific. The, there were signs for the parade that were...
What was it, was it being approved or was it...
Which the board did not approve for the policy, so.
And I forget, I can't remember the policy, because the board... The policy is specifically for one day.
And then I wasn't very concerned, I wasn't part of the board, but I was very concerned that there was signage put up on the menorah. Was it just the menorah?
Right.
So I mean, these are things I think I've heard that we're trying to address in here.
So, so, Christie's comments, the discussion of to be the national state or local days of celebration of remembrance? Okay, yes. And what's your hesitation on this?
Well, I mean, so national, state, these are celebration of remembrance, I could get there, but what's a local day of celebration of remembrance?
Well, a day of celebration of your high school signs. Celebration of remembrance is maybe in Michael Hospital, if I'm just discussing the one assignment.
But, but who defines that?
So it's a day, it's a day of celebration, so they come to us and they ask, under the auspices of day of celebration, or...
This doesn't, as it's written right now, let's, let's, let's just say national and state is sort of the no breaker to have in to be, right now, the local would not require a select board's approval anyways, right?
We go for the town manager.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't specify any.
Matter of fact, it explicitly says does not require a select board.
Right, so it doesn't even require.
Correct. We allow them one sign on the rotary without approval.
First of all, I think that is dangerous.
And we move that, I move that up to the very least.
That's why I was asking if you want to break this section to two.
And not remove national local days of celebration of remembrance, whether or not it's not listed up to town manager approval.
So I...
And I think the only, the only thing that should be required is some of the...
But this looks to me, it's not an official town notice, so I'm just going to push back on that. So I think two other, two other signage, you know, number two, and then through town manager approval. And then, and then if we go down that path as a board, then it would be, letter B.
Right, so you strike on section two, other signage displays of the objects that, and other objects to remove that do not require select board approval, then on A, we would see that does not require, I mean, that, that's candidacy sign, right? There's no reason, reason to it. To Christie, there's no reason to come to us for that, if somebody's holding a sign out for candidacy, that doesn't require it, and so I should see there that there's no approval required for that. And section two B, the expectation is that we're actually required to be the town manager approval.
Right, I would like to see that as a separate section, so there's two.
So town notices, then requires town manager approval, the stones, and then other, which would be candidacy.
Underneath section one.
Right, we should...
So we got section one, what it is, section two would be town manager approval, section three would become other signage, but the informational and advertising displays, and then the numbers would continue to cascade.
Gotcha.
So we're really going more with the defining of what needs approval, and then within it, what falls into that.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. And in section two C, we're all in agreement, we're of the entire... So Sean, I'm not in, yes, so.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't think...
Displays and objects that are not signs.
So we, but for two B, we're also, we're including local days in there, or is that, is that, are we discussing the local days as requiring?
So let's, let's take that hypothetical situation, Michael Hospital day, somebody says we want to have a day of observation, we'd like to put signs on the rotary, and under this, we just said, beginning out of section one, Christie, Tommy, I'm going to approve that.
But only if it's been declared local.
Yes, I say it was declared local, that's correct.
We have a vote tonight, to make it like yesterday, they can now go to town manager without sign.
Yeah, and I think I explicitly...
It's clear.
On celebration of remembrance signage, one weekend advance, and must be exactly an event.
Yeah, so the intent is that it just displayed at the event, if we can do that. I can be more specific on that.
At seven?
Yeah.
I would say local. Because that can also be part of the request for the day of remembrance or discussion. And again, if we have, you know, if, if we as a board declared a X Y Z day, to have a signing off for many days around that, second, four, two, I've heard, is a lot.
Yeah.
It's one thing to get day off, so I think the law will give you a common...
Need approval.
Need approval.
So we strike it, this is, we'd have to confirm.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts, Sean, you agree with that?
I would just maybe add one more thing, so maybe you have your informational non-advertisements on, like, I think...
Which section was that?
Uh, two A, and I think maybe in front of that meeting, two A, just say no advertisements will be allowed.
Yeah, I think that's actually under section four, team commercial advertisements are explicitly prohibited. You okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Are we good with section two? Those changes?
I think so, we'll have to see.
Yeah, I'll bring it before you again, Sean, this is where it's all about.
Yes.
This is, this is the sausage behind your... I appreciate your patience.
No, no.
I, I, I tried to put, yeah, put things in and you guys ruled around, that's kind of what I'm hearing here, so, all right, let's move on. Well, we did talk about, we did talk about two, yeah, two C, we're, we're sure we got an entire, right, that section two C I, two C five R, and two C five N I. Is there anything that you want to keep from those subsections?
I mean, we could include the, that information as, I mean, again, you could include those as needing approval by the support as examples, and then have a final, whatever letter comes, you know, all those signs not listed here, and must come before the select board.
Yeah.
You know, so you could have whatever number one, you know, three C, you know, could be other signage requires select board approval, religious displays, celebration of memorial displays, local club and private signage, and then in the fourth, you could say, not listed above, you got to go before the select board. We could do that, as it relates to the town.
Yeah, I was just saying, I think what Christie is, is that anything that's towards is, don't list it at all, anything that's not listed, we just got to come through, come through the process.
Right, I'm just saying that there's, there's no, I'm just saying you should specify a process for non-compliance of the policy.
Well, that sounds like a double name.
Yeah, I know. I should have a little bit of that. Because you guys, she has mentioned that to me in the past, as we were going through this, and you all explicitly, last time we met, asked for a process.
Don't specify a process for non-compliance.
So what we would say is, to deal with the things that you said, would be, the family displays require select board.
You don't even have to do that, just remove, if you remove all of section two C, then essentially the exclusion section on section four addresses that. We're excluding, and then we're saying in section five, exclusions are...
But the question is, do we want? Well, that's saying, for anything in two C, if we just... Well, that's saying, for anything in two C, if we just, if we just strike it, then no, you don't, we're not going to have an exception process.
Right, you have to have an exception process.
Well, I, to Kristi's point, I think it is, take two C and say, for these signs and other displays, select board approvals required, okay, then you don't need an exception process. We have said, okay, we have said, what town departments will do, will the town manager approve what's required, you know, why don't you put it in with select board approval? Now, if someone wants, it's out of that policy, you know, we don't need to list it in the exception process, the process will be, I can't, I can't, I can't, and say, I know it's not the policy, but, and then it would end up, it would end up coming to us, right? But it's, the difference is not planning for an exception, but not inviting an exception.
Right.
So, so you're saying something different. Yeah, well, so, so, yes, but Alan said, but also, but also, so if you say that certain signs have to come before the board, what is the basis of your decision?
You need to approve register.
To approve register, yep.
If you have a, if you have a process, Kristi, if you have a process, do you have a decision?
Well, if you specify that certain signs need to come before the board, whatever they are, then what's, how do you just make that decision?
So I could-
You could draft another policy.
So if we have a fundamental decision, do we want to list out other signage specifically, to your point, and therefore we would not have to have the section five and six, or to want to eliminate this specific list outside of, or basically in section two, and keep section five and six?
Well, again, even if, even if section five is under, now, going to provide guidance on what basis you want to approve it.
Right. Well, the basis is, so, so I guess I can track on that, is the basis you prove is you're going to the board at that time, board would choose based on our own votes.
Our own votes.
Exactly, it's a lot, and that's, that's a total, and a purposeless thing, you know, it can be, right, so we can't put that into a policy.
Well, right, and I think, I, that was sort of the response I was giving to Kristi, would be really based on the will of the board, and, and its determination was to specify timeframes for any sign.
I, I think that's implied by the fact that we put together a process, so again, you either decide to list out what's explicitly allowed, and then therefore not have a process, and then the process essentially is, hey, I read the policy, as a, as a president of the town, I see that my, my sign that I want to put is allowed, I come to the town manager's office and say, how do I, how do I do this, and the town manager's office will say, you would have to come from, from board, I think that's what Kristi was, had to get it for. No, oh, sorry, I missed that. It would not be actually a process.
I think you're saying, you'll-
I'm saying that if your policy says what's allowed and what's not allowed, then, then you have a basis for which to make a decision, because you can make it based on the policy that you create and approve. If there's these other things that just come to you in these sort of vacuums, because they're individual requests, how do you decide?
So let me just, from a practical perspective, what I hear you saying is, if we have a section of the policy that requires town manager approval for these things, that's very clear, right, that's everything, right, it's okay with you deciding, not Kristi.
Yes.
And then, and then, and then, there could be, there could be items, although I don't think we're saying that, that don't require any ones, and could be explicitly saying, like a political sign, you're holding, right?
Right.
That doesn't require protesting, right?
It's a possible order.
Doesn't require, so that's another kind of section, okay, double words meant this bit, and then, and then there's the, there's what does require a select board approval, and within that section, we could, if we wanted to be specific, that, that, or, let me say this, other signs that are allowed could be listed as religious others, whatever those things are, my concern is that I don't want somebody just kind of going, go, I can go and, you know, put out, you know, my own Christmas tree, because I'm celebrating, you know, or a picture, or a major, I don't know, I mean, there has to be a process or approval, someone's got to be able to say, no, there are too many items in here, like, we've already, and then, and I guess, and I'm just sort of, which I go back to my original thing of, like, do we really need to be managing all this, or do we just sort of leave it at the road, like, it's the road, we don't need all these signs, there are no other stuff, minimalism, it's in, which is not, that's it.
There is a procluse to that, and I think Ian even made that comment on the last quarter in this topic, you know, there is-
I'm channeling you.
So we'll go back and ask again, are we suggesting that we remove all of section two, then, and not explicitly call it, what is allowed or not allowed? I mean, the, the section four exclusions, I think that's important, because it does give some general pieces to, you know, to address for excuse issues and things like that.
I think waiver liability is good, that's good.
I think waiver liability, exclusions are far enough, if we were going to strike two C, because we've talked about two B and then town manager approval.
Yes. So far, we have, we have two A is okay, two with, yeah, as a town manager approval strike.
Okay.
Yep.
Two C we remove, then we remove five and six.
And you want to remove five and six, is everybody, does that make sense to everybody?
And then we're asking you to remove five and six, because you don't want to say, oh, well, there can be an exception, right? The reality is, anyone can request, they can come up with a form, right, well, they, they can request an agenda, and they can respond, yes, or an agenda, or a town agenda.
I think, I think-
Or consider things such as public safety, signs, placement, or what I can do.
In, in the spirit of section five and six, and I'm not a restful person, you, you talk about local, I think that there's one benefit to having those, is that provides a consistent format of information, which the board would get the information and be able to make that, right, if you have somebody coming up with a form, because they just, you know, there was nothing else to do, they're going to come and freewheel it, right, and then, less likely that they're going to be successful, or feel that there was a fair opportunity for them, so, I mean, there, there's an answer to removing it, but I totally get it, I'm not, I'm not against it.
But it's, and that is concerns, because, you know, the information you're, that's in section five is, you know, the basic information you're accessing. Like, celebrate, it's, they're wanting exactly, you let, you listen, be like, okay, so what is it, what are you, you know, when is it, like, you're going to get that information, I don't think that's a issue.
Yeah.
And I understand you're saying, I have to be there, you're saying, oh, here's the policy, anything you want to outside of the policy, come out, right? So I, I just, I would say it more comfortable.
So I would say, I think your unofficialal motion to edit this would be, again, section one stays as is with the removal of the example of the turn advisory board, section two A, we're going to remove the term, the term, the other signage displays and other objects to remove that do not require select board approval, then we'll keep the section two A, we'll remove section two B up to section one, and we're remove and local, and then we're going to, so far, we're going to remove all of section two C, because we have three subsections, and then we will remove sections five and six, is everybody okay with those changes?
Question, so, so the play expand the, our, where do we fall in this policy, is technically, you know, it's just mentioned a single sign here.
Are you specifically asking about five and five, or are you asking about five, I'm sorry, I guess they're putting it in there. Oh, right, so that falls under the other signage, other displays of the policy, right?
So it is a, it's a celebration of remembrance, I guess, essentially.
But you're going, we're talking about signs as opposed to others?
Well, it's, it's other signage, it's, it's other signage displays of other objects, would include the flags under the poppies, the flags, those things.
The flags. But I think your question was, if we're limiting the signage state for candidacy, can we allow us some of that?
But it says a single sign, and we tell you not, but it doesn't talk about flags, or poppies, or ribbons, or-
You change that to sign or label, what happens?
So, just going back to section two C, if, if the board was going to, if the board wanted to say that they would approve these types of signs, but be clear about what you would approve, like, that's, I just want to be clear of what I'm trying to say, because I feel like, if, if you say, you know, no, whatever, no religious objects, or up to two religious objects, or whatever, just I think you just need to be really clear so that you have a basis for your decision, so I'm not, so I know the intent of removing it, but I just want to be clear that I think you can do it, and it can come before the board if that's what you want, but I think you just need to be clear about what your intention is to approve.
Would be reasonable to say displays of other objects that are not signs that will be considered by the board, something like that?
Yeah, is that a good question?
Displays and other objects that are not signs that will be considered by the board for select board.
So that's something like the advisory board, or the asking of laws.
I mean, you could say, displays of other objects that are not signs that are in celebration of A, right?
Then you can leave all of those subsections by, 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 by.
I don't think that you would ever want to permit private signage on the road, right?
So, I mean, to that, when you, well, I mean, little club and private signage could be, I'm not sure, sorry, it's commercial, maybe that's, yeah, maybe that just needs to come up.
No, it says it in the decision, so that's all.
I mean, right, because if you're not a club, not safe, I don't know if you have a good example.
Well, you know, this actually falls under exclusion in section four D, and one of the comments that came back in council was the addition of word "commercial" advertisements, and my suggestion that we actually reject that change, because in my opinion, anything that, you know, for example, I think in Monica, they put up a website, a phone number, that seems to advertise here, right, so any advertising is not allowed, so private falls in my mind, the private messaging is an advertisement.
Right, although I'm not sure, we're having this discussion, I'm just not sure that that's what the policy stands on its own, and, and then the other piece, actually, just when you mentioned four B, I think most people think commercial is like for profit versus not for profit, and so then if I'm, let's say I'm in a church, and I'm having a church fair, can I display, use the road to display that event?
Right.
You know, the sign for that.
Right, with that, right.
How to use that.
Right.
I think that kind of feels-
Do you want to take another crack at this?
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to suggest that-
How long you want to go?
Patrick, you want to take, Patrick, you have some ideas, we have some things that we've reached consensus on, so this, a version, and there's a couple of the points, I would suggest that Patrick take a crack at it, and maybe if there's another individual member of the staff, they'll be willing to chat a thing for a few minutes, and work, who's, you know, who's-
With all the policies, with all the-
We're going to, I'm going to go on.
It's his fault.
Sorry, I'm going to go to the flag. Um, can I serious, maybe?
No, I don't, I don't have an attitude, so someone's-
Sure. Or split the two, if we're going to fly one, and then we're going to fly the other. I'd be, we'd be worried to have some more visual, if you want.
I do like, in more any discussion, I do like section five, that kind of says, like, so for the person that's reading it, so what do I do next, like, with life, so I don't like this.
You don't get to put a, you don't get to put a sign in the road, if you're reading it, and it's not there.
That's bad, you know, I heard a lot of the sign, you know, sign and signs for, yeah.
So, but I do, I think I'd like to hear from this body that can remove, section five and six, or keep them for the next discussion.
I'm hearing from Kristi and Alan that we should-
Those are our points, I'll have to get back to that, and discuss.
Sean, you have any, any view?
Yeah, I can tell you, I've been looking forward a year after this, and, and help you out, and see what we can come to.
Sean, you guys? All right, Sean, I'm all for it.
I will tell you that I'm tempted to put a sign shop on road, because there will always be signs on the road.
I saw a couple that ever has some something serious.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, right, you have yard sales, there's-
Can we move the flag, or?
Yeah, let's, let's move that.
Let's, let's do this.
Let's do the chair.
Okay.
So yeah, let's talk about the flag policy as well.
A separate flag policy.
Well, I, we'll see, so, again, same process here, flags are permitted in town and property of public buildings as follows, section one, general, any questions on section one? Okay, section two, United States and America flag, any questions on section two? I just mentioned that I standardized this in a policy, and so happens to poll for it.
I thought that with two B, we said that it's a specific, I just wanted to make sure it's encompassing, I think I read it, two B encompassing, I'm going to say what I want to, this policy is saying nothing shall require the board to replace the flag with any other flag, that does not preclude the flag authority from flying the POW flag, is that correct?
That is correct.
This is like, you have to remove all-
This is basically, there's nothing in this policy system that we have to remove in the American law, so, and then to go further on-
I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
And, and the spirit of this specifically is that the road is, kind of is a special thing, that the American, the United States flag will fly on, on top of, on that, you know.
I shouldn't have to state that, but I'm supportive of stating the most.
Yeah. All right. Section three, other flags, through the town manager's approval, the town must remain allowed, state other flags, and then USYS follows the town owned land and public buildings. Questions, I think some of these were additions we would ask for at the last meeting.
I'm just going to bring up local days of celebration, I think that that is way too big, and I, unless we can further define that, or we have good examples, I would ask to strike that, local, local days.
Okay, any legal objections to that? I concur. Okay. Good, moving on to section four, other country's flags to select board approval.
Um, no, no, I, I recommend we, if we want to make a statement, I was to be honest here, while stating that language of exclusion, I do not think that on any flag pole that is a town flag pole, we need to fly any other country flag, maybe using Bay State comments, because that's pretty much what has come up, although I know Veterans Freedom Park is another one, if a, an organization, whether it be a nation-based organization, or a club wants to fly its flag, bring a flag pole, and hang a flag, we have a gazebo, it has hooks there, hang it up, straighten it up, that's fine, the town, we don't need to incur the liability of taking down our flag on, you know, the town's flag, so I would recommend that if we, if we want language around other country's flag to be, to explicitly state, that we will not, I, I don't think it would.
So, so four says only if state comment and a temporary flag stack must be used, must be placed to not state.
Well, I don't even understand, so we have-
Saying not using fixed pole, and then using a basic pole, you're using, if you're going to fly a flag, a basic comment, you don't figure in a pole, in international, you know, you look at the United States-
Why do we even have, I mean, we don't, I mean, we don't govern, like, when people have an event up there, we don't, like, now we're going to decide, tell them what they can bring?
Well, my understanding, Krista, you're wrong here, the, there has been requests from the House to fly a country's flag on West Wall Flagpole.
On the flag, yes.
Correct, and this is a response, I have to say. And this is a response, I have to say, we're not going to take down the US flag on the flagpole in Westboro. However, it will allow you to erect a temporary flagpole on the Bay State Commons, here are the documents, it's flown at the same height, under an international recognition, USY has to be at the same height, and has to be at the same size as the US flag.
Well, I think, I think section four, I mean, if I read it multiple times, it'd be, um...
We read it up, just so we don't summarize there, okay? Uh, section four, other country's flags to select or approval, other country's flag. The town Westboro may allow this flag, but another country's flag can be flown only at Bay State Common. The flying of the country's flag must be done in conjunction with the event held on Bay State Common. Other country's flags can be raised up to one hour before the event, must commence one hour within one hour after the event, and cannot exceed the available hours of the event. Three, temporary flag stuff must be used and must be placed, not stated. Four, per the US flag code, flies two or more nations where displayed, they are to be flown from separate staffs at the same height, the flag should be approximately equal size.
Which, here's the thing, we, I don't want an organization coming to Bay State Commons and putting up a temporary, I don't know, 20, 30, 40, 50-foot flagpole.
Yeah, it's approximately 30 feet, you did the research on that.
And that's kind of what we're inviting here.
Yes.
No. No.
Correct.
Absolutely not. It's not necessary, if you want to bring a flag, there's a flagpole, there's a stand, bring a flag.
So just again, so you understand, the US flag code actually states that if you fly a separate country's flag next to the United States' flag, it has to be at the same height and approximately the same size.
But we don't have the same height.
That's why I'm saying to somebody, you can bring that.
And then it falls, and it falls on the playground, and it shows...
So that's where the, that's where the, that's where the waiver of liability is going to expand on that.
Well, it's, when a flag is flying, you still can't say that.
Yes.
I think that, you know, maybe, maybe there's language that says, "With respect to the US flag code, I don't know, you know, we recognize that what we're saying is not per the US flag code, but in this case, you want to bring a flag and hang it for your event? Go for it, but you cannot touch, you can't touch our flagpole, and you can't our US flag, and you can't erect..." I would, I would actually, I guess, put it in, you know, the flagpole you bring can't be safe, and it can't be higher than, I don't know, whatever standard flagpole height.
Right, I think that might also be the US flag code.
Well, I'm okay with that.
I don't know, I don't know how to do that. Again, I'm seeing, if it's a US flagpole, actually, it was actually passed by the US state, the House of Representatives, and on this study, this is actually a law.
I guess I'll go first.
So, I'd love to hear other views, I'm sure.
I'm okay with that, then I'll go back to my, then you can't fly another country's flag. You can fly a club flag, you can fly any organizational cause, but you can't fly another country's flag, because we cannot comply with the US flag.
So you're saying that if I had a peace flag, or a justice...
United Nations flag.
United Nations flag, or a simple golf flag, either flag, other than another country's flag, I could write a flagpole and put that flag...
No.
No, no flag.
You can hang it from the rafters.
But you can bring your own, you know, flagpole.
So again, this is the US flag code. It is.
No, it's not.
It is, because if you look at, for example, President of the States, when he goes into business, another indignity area, they actually have the flags exactly the same.
No, no, but not to flagations, no, no. And I have a flag.
What we're doing is you're saying, respect given to a unitary organization is different than respect given to another country.
No.
I'm thinking...
Sorry, I didn't understand.
I know what you're saying, like, the US flag code with other countries, absolutely understand, it's a, it's a very interesting policy, actually, that that is...
In times of peace, that's required.
Right, right. I, so, I'm saying, here in the town of Westboro, presently, as this policy and this board stands, we don't have the, we don't have multiple flagpoles to accomplish...
Yes.
Permanent, structured, rounded, you know, with safe flagpoles. So because we don't have that, and because we recognize the US flag code, we're saying that we cannot fly another nation's flag here. We just can't do it, it's not practical.
Okay. So, what?
You want to have an event, if you want to have an event, and you happen to have a flag, I'm not really defined what a flag is, and you want to hang it through a...
And that should be recorded by the policy, I think, just, it's expected, okay? You can display your flag on the gazebo, or on a table, or wherever you choose, you can just...
Yeah, yeah, you can lay it on the ground, whatever you want to do.
That's okay, so Shaun, do you have any thoughts on this on your chair?
I think I'm okay with that, I think we've had, is it a single request for this? Two requests?
Same organization.
Okay. Um, and I don't know if we told them, hey, if you erected your own flagpole, it was 30 feet high, and they had all this, we would have absolutely...
You're pulling it in, I don't know, right?
Okay. Yeah. Well, certainly, I would say, yeah, but I guess what I'm saying is, I agree with Shaun, that, you know, we, I don't think anyone would go through that in order to get it done, but I think it is easier for us to just say no.
If we get enough requests, that that is coming up, and we need to have a sort of United Nations kind of look or place at Bay State Common, well, then that becomes a town meeting article, where we've got to ask for money, you know, another flagpole or five?
I'm going to change, I'm going to make sure I...
I'm arguing that.
So, we're, we're essentially striking section four. Are you good with it?
Yeah.
Okay. We have our liability.
Kristy, are you getting that, that it, again, just using what's included, what's excluded, to not, if you strike four, it means it's not a lie?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think to keep it, it's unbelievable, even, your policy could just be that, um, you know, we only fly the American flag on the town flagpoles, and then the board could decide, or, you know, you could list these as, oh, I guess the town manager orders. Yes, I think, okay, okay. I think a national is a ball. The only thing I would add, before you finish your discussion on the flag, is that you have, currently have a policy about flags at half mast, so you probably want to just incorporate it into this policy.
So that we don't need six, right? Because that would give you the types of flags that could be flown.
You're saying you don't need exclusions, I think similar to signs, I think you want to save this. Um, but although you're saying, as we're, well, four is exclusively of the country's flags, um, three is other flags, so, six is not a...
Although it's a six, is it relevant because other than those, other than those, other than the US flag was listed in three A, nothing will be flying on a town flagpole?
Right, I'm not sure if the number is off here, right? I guess I'm not sure how the exclusions apply if we're not allowing any unit to fly a flagpole on a town flagpole.
Yeah, I got you. So section six is to be removed, you know, seven A, and if we're, if we're going to be consistent on policy, seven A can be removed as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Shaun, did you have any other questions?
That's all. This sounds good, so what would I do? Yeah, Mike, you try?
Yep, so two, three, and... One, two, three, and five. Right, one, two, three, five, and corporation flying a flag at half staff. So there is one on the minutes. So let's go forward, yep. Bring it close.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Good stuff.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, um, next on agenda is reappointments, request for appointments and reappointments.
Same to reappointments, Courtney Newton has requested to be reappointed to the Spirit Committee, and Dan Zerbi has requested reappointment to the zoning board of appeals. The Spirit Committee appointment is a one-year appointment, CPA is a three-year appointment. And then for new appointments, Stephen Solomon has requested an appointment to the Spirit Committee, Randy Helish has requested an appointment to Sustainable Westboro for a one-year term, Melissa Pandina has requested an appointment to the Cultural Council, that's a three-year term, and then Diane Collins has requested an appointment to Council on Aging, which is also a three-year term. And so for the new appointments, the board receives letters of interest in your packet.
Can I ask a clarification?
Sure.
Um, for the Council on Aging, we received a, an email, I think it came to the board today, for someone who's interested in the Council on Aging. I don't know if there's plans for another position to open up?
I thought there was one more position after this one.
Okay, I was just looking...
So the way that the, um, the openings are on the top of your agenda, I'm assuming that the appointments, reappointments are approved today.
Okay, that's my correct, so, so, this one?
There's always one.
Okay, thank you, all right. If not, okay, thank you. Thanks. Um, would you like a motion?
I would love to set a motion.
Set a motion?
If I'm able to.
Okay, I move to reappoint Courtney Newton, and appoint Stephen Solomon to the Spirit Committee for terms to expire June 30, 2022. I move to reappoint Dan Zerbi to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire June 30, 2024. I move to appoint Randy Helish to Sustainable Westboro for a term to expire June 30, 2022. I move to appoint Melissa Pandina to the Cultural Council for a term to expire June 30, 2024. I move to appoint Diane Collins to the Council on Aging for a term to expire June 30, 2024.
Second vote. Okay, any additional comments, questions, or discussion? Senior here and gone. We'll move to the vote, all favor. Four zero passes for being president. Excellent. And I want to just briefly thank everyone for coming forward and expressing their interest. As we said before, there are approximately 400 opportunities on various boards and committees that all play a role in helping, helping the town run, keep the town moving forward, and so appreciate all of you willing to step forward, make the commitment, and get it out of and stay at your second, there's still many other opportunities. So if you have an interest, you can probably match each other, so please let us know. And that, though, next on agenda is, um, local initiative program compliance certificate, deed and de rider for the sale of the portable housing unit 25 Moses Wheel Lane. Town council has reviewed the documents provided by its regulations, and the town executed the documents. Now, if you have questions about the materials?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm, it was, the information in the packet was unclear as to town council's review of the documents, it's, um, it wasn't clear that town council had actually reviewed them. Perhaps someone else, Mr. Engineer, has reviewed them?
Uh, no, he has not reviewed them, uh, he's no longer on the housing partnership committee, so, I mean, that's why I sent them to town council.
Okay, so, so in Sharon's comments, it says that, um, it, or I read it, that she did not actually review them, but that she was relying on DHCD signature as, um, as the review and recommendation that our chair signed.
Um, so the documents were, I mean, you can see from the dates that the documents were executed by date, the process is a little odd for this one, um, they were executed by DHCD back in November, um, it looks, it appears, or what we were told was that the documents got lost in transit, so, um, so they were sent to us. So, um, she did receive all of the documents, um, and her, you know, review was that, I mean, what you're, what you're signing is that they meet those qualifications in that document that you're signing, so, um, one of those being that the person's eligible purchaser, which DHCD also has to attest to, typically, we get that, we get the document first, and then DHCD signs it after.
So our council didn't actually review these, but we're not, we're comfortable with the DHCD, because they said that they have reviewed it, and we're okay.
Right, so the documents were sent to town council?
Wait, would you...
But her response is what happened?
It says, "I would rely on DHCD's record, and use a record that the chair signed," and she should get...
Oh, I see, I see.
So the question is, is she saying since DHCD signed it, it's okay for you to sign, or is she saying, "I don't view, and I don't see anything out of the ordinary, you can rely on DHCD's signature?"
And I don't know how sensitive this is, um, if we can get clarification, and I guess I would be willing to make a motion that, um, you know, if she's not required, this isn't a motion, but, you know, if, if her review isn't required, and she says that it's okay for the chair to sign, that's fine, but I, I'm just not clear if it's been reviewed by council, if that's required.
So, if you want to make a motion that's contingent on us following up with town council, that's fine, I guess what I'm saying is that the first page here is what you're, what you're signing, and so it's, it's saying that all of these things are true, which DHCD also signs.
Okay, that is...
So it's an accurate description of the property, it's an eligible purchaser, the purchase price is correct. And second points, with the existing covenants and the de rider, that means DHCD's current standards for the new de rider, which will move us towards a perpetuity?
Okay, it's just, I mean, if you're not trying to hold things, I'm just referencing other documents, I'm just not sure, you know, Alan, you're the one that has to sign that, so we have to make a motion to sign it, so...
Why don't you just make it, I mean, you could approve, kind of following it.
I'm not, I'm not, I went through it, I did the matchup, I think the numbers are correct.
Right, because the other documents had the numbers.
Um, you know, it starts with dollar amounts, and, you know, the new covenant is the new covenant that DHCD is using, takes any question about those properties, remain, it's for the housing, out of, out of consideration, so, um, you know, personally, I'm comfortable signing the document, but if this board, or you just want to check to make sure that town council has looked and said, you know, to clarify whether town council has looked or not, said, "I don't see anything out of the ordinary, you can rely on," or, "Go ahead," or, um, "I'm comfortable with that as well," that can come around pretty quickly.
So I'm making, I mean, so I'll make that a made motion, so I move to author, uh, I move to authorize the chair to sign the board, right? That's what she did on the town manager.
Um, I usually sign that, but...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's fine, it's, if you want...
No, no, it's fine, just again, it's, she authorized the chair to sign it.
Okay, let's, Alan, I'll take turns.
Okay, so I move to authorize the town manager execute a local initiative program compliance certificate for 25 Moses Wheel Lane, following, um, approval by town council, that the documents have been properly reviewed.
The chair board, right, I thought, sorry, I thought you were... Alan, do it. It doesn't matter.
That's okay, Sharon's email says that authorizes the chair, the chair...
That's fine, so, it's, it's, sorry.
See, let's strike that. I move to authorize the chair, um, the chair to select the board to execute a local initiative program compliance certificate for 25 Moses Wheel Lane, following, heading, authorization of...
Verification.
Verification by town council that the documents have been properly reviewed and
I'll second that. I see a second. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Senior and number two, all favor. Motion passes four zero for being president.
Can you just make sure you get a copy, just FYI?
Yeah, sure. Okay, so next on agenda is the town manager performance review and contact inspection. And so for this, um, the, that's what it covers, okay, so, um, I'll introduce this one here. So, this is, sorry to introduce this, but, um, I'll take a step and walk through the process, and then you can, um, open it to the board for comments and questions.
Okay.
And so as, sort of summary evaluation by the select board for fiscal year 2021, which is a review period we're discussing. The board member, you know, each individual board member has prepared evaluation and recommendations in solid evidence. So the board evaluated town manager's performance in six town union major categories. Board support relations, financial management, personnel management, organizational leadership, community leadership, public relations, talent operations, infrastructure, personal professional, which is individual qualities and professional skills and status. Each of these categories contains between four and seven statements, each of which describes the industry standard in that category. The board used the following four-point rating scale to evaluate performance relative to a total of 36 standards. The ratings run from one to four. One proven needed to meets job standards, three exceeds job standards, four is outstanding. If a board member felt that they might observe activity in that category, they'd also mark it NO for not observed. In the composite, what the board has in front of it right now is composite that are reviewed, averaging our scores, and consolidating all of our comments as provided without edit. The highest scores in this composite, the highest score received in the category is board's corporate relations, financial management, talent operations, infrastructure, each of which produced an average score of 3.7 out of four. Following that, individual qualities, professional skills, and status, the average score of 3.6, the personal management, organizational leadership, the community leadership, public relations, each with an average score of 3.5. In looking at town manager's performance, it's one of the overall evaluating performances exceeding job standards of all six evaluation categories. Within categories, the family performance criteria is the highest rating of outstanding of all the others. Effectively facilitates key projects, such as the annual budget and full setting processes. Establishes annual budget process, considers needs, goals, and priorities set by the board. Actually forecasts and reports the town's financial condition. Presents budget information in a manner that promotes full understanding of the issues and needs. Provides effective oversight and direction of town programs and services. Anticipates future needs to organize work operations, establishes appropriate timetables to enhance or expand municipal services. Is available to resolve difficult problems, manage conflict, or effectively under pressure. In addition to readings, the site above, individual members of the select board will provide the opportunity to give great comments about the performance as town manager over the last year, and all members providing comments. These overwhelming positive comments combined with composite ratings across the six categories above reflect a collective judgment of the board that Christie continues to lead the town with confidence, and that she demonstrates sound fiscal management skills, and is dedicated to fostering a team environment as well as continuing to grow personally and professionally in her role as town manager. On that, there is consolidated comments included that the board has been providing with. Can this get posted on town assembly?
Yes.
Shortly after this meeting?
Correct.
So at this, it is part of the public record. At this point, I will open the floor to comments and questions from members of the board. Let's push the last question. Last question, one, six.
You do, you do have a motion.
You have a motion.
Well, we have to make a motion.
That's the important part, the second part.
Okay, so we'll do the motion, and then we'll do the discussion.
First, please, your comments.
Okay, so.
Just a motion?
Yes.
I move pursuant to section 2C of the Employment Agreement between the town of Westboro and Christie Williams that the town extend the contract for one additional year, thereby extending the term end date to June 30, 2024, and further to amend section 6A salary to include language as provided by town council that increases the town manager's salary for fiscal 2024 by the same percentage increase that is received by non-union employees of the town for fiscal year 2024.
Second motion, if you do. Okay, now, discussion. Well, Christie, would you like to say something?
I just, you know, I appreciate the comments that the board has made, and I appreciate the process, and thank you.
Comments, questions? Sure, I'll just read my thoughts without I put it to the council.
Actually, no, we need to be careful. This is where, under the meeting law, it's not intended.
It's a collective.
Yes.
It's a collective, oh, it's like, how do you say that? Okay, so.
Well, can you explain that for the public? Because this is a very, thank you for the comments.
So, a couple of things for the public. First, related to motion, employing managers generally into appointing our manager in executive session. Christie is town manager of a contract with the town of Westboro through the select board. He has a provision back in the first year and the second year of the contract, upon mutual agreement, it can be extended by a year. That would effectively, it was voted to extend last year, I'm voting to extend this year. Effectively, the length of the contract goes from three years to five years. That was included in that contract as a way to not only recognize performance, but to signal the desire that the relationship will continue. And that, you know, we don't want to change town managers every three years. We don't really want to change every five, unless we absolutely have to, and that's not the case here. As far as how the discussion process works, we have to follow the meeting law as well as Kim can elaborate case law, or bargaining, town manager personnel information.
So the way that the process works, each board member completes an individual evaluation that is submitted to me under the recent Supreme Judicial Court's ruling related to the Wayland case. To avoid any conflict with the meeting law, it's advisable that an individual who is not a member of the board pull together the evaluation, which I've done, which you have. That was not released to you until right before tonight's meeting because it contains your opinion, so had you had it before then, it could have been construed as deliberation. And again, this comes from the court case. So the idea here is the individual board member evaluations remain confidential, they're not public documents. It's the document that you have before you tonight that compiles the responses, provides that average ratings, that includes all of the written commentary. That is not a public document for release.
So that said, this document, you know, is public version, so am I able to read from that, or do you have?
But you are, you should not, you do not want to identify comments that you have made, of which. Yes.
So it's sort of intended, you may be able to, you may be able to, because we're moving writing style or something that we're not supposed to.
But at that point, what happens, you're referencing the individual board member evaluations would have to become public at that point unless process is set up, but that's not the intention, that's how.
Christie sees them very clearly?
Yeah, yeah, well, that makes sense, I think, yeah.
She seems to be a big star. She's.
My evaluation's your evaluation, or whatever.
So I just.
We'll come back to you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. So Kim, first of all, thank you for all your work to compile this, to compile the evaluation. I appreciate the explanation. I did not recall the process as the same, so the case law reference is very helpful as to why we can get this before the meeting, so.
And that's a recent, maybe 2018 time?
No, it's helpful because I was kind of like, how are we supposed to review this? You know, so thank you, or appreciate that, because you know, I'll know how much I love to review documents. But on to more important matters. Christie, I want to thank you, I think this, for all of your work through a very influential period, unprecedented, and, you know, you continue to serve the town well. I advocate for your employees, our employees, the town's employees, and you're working exceptionally well with this board through challenging discussions, and I think if the public were to stay, you know, way through our policy discussion, they see that, so they see your advice to the board that is, you know, always respectful and it's reflective of what is in the best interest of the town. So thank you, and I'm, you know, really happy that the evaluation is what it is and we're staying on for five plus years. I just think it's five years.
Yeah, you know, in my short time here on the board, and you've been a great help to me in getting this speed, and I just want to say thank you very much. And personally, I know I have a lot to do and allow you of that, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I would, I got one of those sentiments, short time on the board, so a lot for me to learn, I've been on public, served on the public board before, and I appreciate all the great conversations that we've had. You're a wealth of knowledge, and it's been a pleasure to be working with you, and I think the town is very fortunate to have somebody with your skills, your ability to maneuver through challenging times and through, you know, difficult and high-pressure situations. So thank you very much for your service to the town, I look forward to working with you through whether my remainder of my time on board is, and, you know, it's a pleasure.
So I won't agree with, so won't repeat other comments. I do want to thank, the process is a 360 process, it was also completely provided from department heads, and I want to thank them for participating in the process for their comments, which I personally found enlightening, and it settled ways, and provided good food for thought as well, particularly given the unique demands. Christie, Kim, department heads, town staff, over the last, if you say 12 months, it's been closer to 18. But I think until the last piece of paper goes in the paper, we'll still be talking about it, so appreciate that very much. And so thank you for your professionalism and your service to the town.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Now, call the vote, ball of favor. The motion passes four zero for being present. Next item on our agenda is the approval of reading minutes. We have reading minutes from our June 22nd, June 29th, and June 26th meeting. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Is that any real subject minutes, any edits? Yes, that's anything felt capable from the rest. Now, I'm ready to motion to approve all three settlements.
So I will approve, or I'll make a motion to approve the June 22nd, 2021 minutes? The.
July 29th.
Uh, yeah, June, July, June 29, 2021, and July 6, 2021.
Second. Thank you, consecutive, and you find the session to handle, Seale, call.
As always, thank you to Seale.
Yes, thank you very much. Call vote, all favor, vote is four zero for being present, motion passes. Next on our agenda is our entry into executive session.
Motion?
I would.
I move to entry into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 296, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate, and under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to act. Before, I'm going to pause for a second.
We forgot to introduce correspondence.
Yes, and, personally, do we?
Did you see that other?
I did. Yeah, sorry, sorry, sorry. So issues and correspondence, there was another agenda item, number 11, I think it was.
So it looks like, so the other agenda item was related to Phil's school and adjustment in the project funding agreement, but it looks like the town, after July 20, will receive the PFA, the project funding agreement, and at that point, the authorizing authority of the town, which I'm not sure if that's, I believe it could be this board, would vote on it at that time.
There was just some confusion with the information received from the OSB and the timing of whether or not we would need to authorize or vote, so we don't need to, so that's okay.
Okay, so that's one of them, we should not, apologies, we should not score our accused correspondence, so we will retract, thank you for practicing the motion, we will go back to it. Let's go to even to fix that post-production.
Yes.
So issues and correspondence, I will start with Sean.
Sure, thank you very much. So the EDC met this morning, and Todd Alexander was voted the new chair of EDC, and Linda Townsend is the new vice chair. There was one item that came up during the meeting that I wanted to bring up here, and there was discussion of changing the makeup of the committee in terms of the number of individuals on the committee and who those individuals might be. Right now, I think it's 50/50, town employees to non-town employees. It looks like this will be an item for the next meeting on August 3rd, will be an agenda item. I know individuals on this board have been members of that committee, and we have to solicit feedback from any of you, if you have any thoughts about that, right into the discussion on August 3rd. That's it for me, thank you very much.
Sure, so just an update, the Hakamaka Pond Reuse Committee in its newly official format and appointed body, bodies, met last Thursday, had a great discussion, and it was nice to see Christie Alavine and Jim Sturges as new members, so it was great. So we had really healthy discussions to the purpose of the committee and next steps. We are inching forward toward the recommendation, you know, that whole process, but it will just, for the board's patience, it's going to take a little while because it's, we are dependent upon hearing from the EPA, and these are these with a turnover document that tells us basically any restrictions of the land, I'll just leave it at that. So once we get that information, which is forthcoming, shortly forthcoming, we'll table and review it, and then we can kind of move forward with further discussions as to how possible uses for that property. And I also just, that's that update, Act of Transportation Safety Committee debt to review the feasibility study prior to a presentation for the Conservation Commission. Last Tuesday, I also attended the Conservation Commission meeting, just to. I also attended the Conservation Commission meeting just to hear that presentation. It was presented by Randy Warmerman and his brother, who's, he might forget right now, I apologize, the other Mr. Warmerman. And I would say that overall, the feasibility study was well-received by the Conservation Commission. It was something that they were approving, there's nothing filed. So it was script general comments during the meeting and questions, and they will be preparing final comments that will be incorporated into the study and for their August meeting. And I think that is it for me, if that is something I apologize for.
Yeah, so just a couple of things. We had our first sustaining meeting after we establishing the Sustainable Westboro Committee, where we went in for Pete Dunback to be the chair, Cheryl Thomas with the US chair, and Tim Keller to be the secretary. Also brought on board Randy Pelish, who's first meeting officially at the time, and there's also there. So I would just categorize the meeting as kind of where we've gone from that storming, norming-forming, we're kind of at a, say, warming phase now. We're talking, we talked about a number of different projects, a little bit down, I'll go to a few more. And he and I are going to be in this later this week to talk a little more about how we want to start to have a board outs in that meeting about various different project needs. So I expect as we continue to work through, kind of, you know, building the team and working through how we operate a little bit. I think we're going to have the board bring back the word and communicate on its behalf. And I'll just briefly mention the senior center, lots of the great activities planned throughout the rest of the summer. There's baseball trips, so a variety of baseball teams, whether it's the Usaks, there's also a Columbia, I guess, Columbia, they look up to, up to be enforced. So I encourage this new community to involve and participate in these things. These sound like some really great fun activities. And then certainly, the Tuesday meetings that Ella has set up are, I think, some wonderful different activities. And I've been trying, and I keep telling Ella, I'm trying to get on her list of big o'clockers. So we'll be doing that at some point, and see how that goes.
So that's a, that's a big ask.
It is a, it's a common position. It's like, you know, an all-star thing.
She warned me when I was in council meeting, and she was like, you're terrible.
So all, all good, all good. Thank you.
Okay. Two, uh, three quick things on my plate. I was asked by Westboro Football Housing Trust just to let the board give a word update on the version of the assistance bill management, it's still underway. There are currently 12 households in town receiving assistance. 12. And we're still receiving about one to application for weeks. So there are four currently in process, so the households are getting their information together and funding that's available at this point in time, and at a long term, trying to assess the needs, whether it's extending assistance to families who haven't been able to transition to state programs yet. We'll continue to accept applications and grant them when the program will find out. So my area might be even working with the administrator, you know, in actual collaboration, we're all on the back. The committee handbook, now that we're coming out of COVID, it has gone through review by town council for our extensive and substantial comments about assets and structure of the document, as well as the content. It says we benefited from the delay because changes in open meeting laws and some other factors that come out of COVID are further reforming the document at this point in time. So the intent is, were we to incorporate those comments and come up with a clean draft, I could provide red lines, but you probably have 25 pages of red line and five pages of text. And so I figured a clean draft, and we'll get that out to the board for review shortly, so that it can be discussed when, potentially, we're going to have our August meeting before there. The last is more of a correspondence than an issue. I've received a couple of requests from National Bureau and their government and public relations team. There have been a number of articles and opinion pieces published in Carolina Magazine that are highly critical of the project. They have requested that I, as an individual, write an outback piece for Carolina Magazine, covering up the bottom word, vote to support the project. And granted, I can do that as an individual, but also recognizing that I'm on the select board, currently sitting as chair, and if I say I have capacity, it's true, it's the opinion of the board. I would not, they wanted to do it without consensus of the board and be a chance for board members to get out and give a feedback to a draft, so that it does represent the views of the board, at least consensus. The points that I have made in response to the outback pieces I've written would one, cover the scope of the project. Much of the criticism of the project, they do add, you know, outpatient surgeries ever, but in fact, it's full integrated health center. So I would point out that it's providing primary care and primary medical health services that are much to the good of the community as they are, insurance wise, statewide. And that, I would point out that we trust that our public health determination of the process would adequately determine the types, quantities of procedures and services that we need to provide there. So there's been criticism that the facility can place a upper-middle-class white community. So I would highlight the fact that, well, there's a perception of Westboro. The reality has changed over the last two and a half decades. We have the actual active population. Even pointing out that our percentage of the IP of the city residents is comparable with towns such as Hudson, which has a perception that they're much more diverse. Though in our country, we're also much more economically diverse. Yes, on average, we have a wealth of communities that are in the middle street, but we do have a fairly broad base, the fact that we have the highest percentage of rental homes to, over-owned households of all communities in our area. And that, you know, over 40% of our households rented in our cost rate indicate that there's need. The final major criticism appears to be that it's not accessible by public transit. To which I point out today, if you're standing on board and wanting to use public transit to get to Marble Grove Hospital, you could take, you could go to South Grove T Station, take the train, you could do rail to Franklin, catch Tendem, or take bus to South Grove Center, transfer to one that you take, you can get to Marble Grove Center, or transfer to one that you take to the hospital, it would take between 90 minutes and two and a half hours at that time of day. Similarly, to go to UMass Medical Center on Lake Avenue, it's a similar 90 minutes to two and a half hours at that time of day. It includes a walk of several blocks. So if you were going there for MRI or whatever, that would be problematic. Whereas for residents in most areas of Westboro and about 50% of the land mass and street area, it's a two-hour ride or two hours each way. And so it is accessible by public transit. And that transit mechanism at the end of the WRT is a business service, which is one of the bus terms, does cat, it's a few of the rails as well, so it does provide options for people following these coming in and moving that to the facility as well. So those would be my points. If this is something, you know, no vote necessary, regardless of what the board is comfortable with, I'm having to draft something, send it out, I can accept feedback while just meeting, or if I'm just meeting, signing all that, I'm not going to do it. I'm comfortable with the way I just wanted to bring it forward.
You guys have a couple of thoughts, in no particular order. Via this, the right of management, the gang clusters, as you mentioned, and the expectation of that is that other communities, as they see it, be successful in Westboro, would expand on that hopefully, and it gives an opportunity where other communities can hopefully bridge out any issues in this hospital. Yeah, I guess my general question is, is it, is this normal practice that the model agreement might have? This, I just, it seems to be like a little dangerous waters.
Yeah, I mean, the board took a vote to provide comment previously, but I can't think of another time that we provided that level of detail in terms of support for our business. I don't have, we don't really have.
I don't think there's a question for it. My concern really is around accurate representation of Westboro's character as a community.
It's another significant concern for that. And then here's my last question would be, can we ever hear back? I mean, this is for a future board meeting, can we ever hear back on the determination?
That, that's still a process.
Yeah, it might, I think it's still ongoing.
Yeah, it's ongoing, and I believe a component of that is a third-party analysis of cost analysis.
Just a general, I'm here for one, I would support writing a draft. No harm in looking at it as a word and saying, is this what we want to do? And I would suggest that, I, I think we need that data, I'm sure, if, personally, I have some. I would like to understand before looking at this community and produce an article.
I mean, my, my thought is that National Bureau of Government is looking for that response before the determination. Not that it will influence the determination, but like, from the, from a community perspective. I am worried about the slippery slope, as, you know, so we do this, this situation, why wouldn't we do it for some other company that's trying to establish themselves? And, you know, I think we have to be candid, not all of, I mean, we have received a confluence in the community against, you know, against the establishment of this facility. So I'm curious why the town, I mean, it was the board's vote, so, you know, why the town might not respond with some factory leader points, just to correct the record? As opposed to. You know, so maybe it's on, I mean, and again, I don't think much of our here is as issues and correspondence, so stop me if we are, but I, I think that, I think if it were written, you know, we, we want to make sure that the readers will come, like, and understand, you know, really understand Westboro as a community, then I think that that's appropriate. It's not specifically speaking to the company, and it's, you know, it's establishing a business here. It's, to the point, it's correcting the record of what Westboro is. So I, that to me is, is more reasonable, but again, at this time, so.
Yeah, yeah, I would wonder, so these original unvet articles are responding, were any of them from, say, the Harbor Grove City Government?
Yes.
They can be, so you're really.
Harbor Grove, signatures of Harbor Grove have written, probably one or two of them, I have to back.
Yeah, so I think you agree, are answering the points that they have made about the town of Westboro. I think that would be appropriate.
No, I don't think to challenge Harbor Grove to fall.
I was going to say.
I'm a simple boss, I'm standing for a block. No, so, notice that on the floor, there's a request was for me as an individual. And like, I don't even have to mention it, I'm sure, for the select, the select one, I'm like, well, that gets close to stuff we have in town. It's a great group search, you know.
I appreciate you bringing me up to that.
I would focus in on, say, as far as determination to leave, that's not us. That's not, that's the state committee that didn't trust that they'd made the right decision. For us, let's clear up the record of Westboro, what it means, and, you know, yes, we did go to support this because of the benefits we saw to our community as representatives of our.
And you can watch me in here, but here's what we need to know about Westboro.
Right.
I like that idea, so I can make your, your idea of sticking a gentleman.
Maybe get some folks from Harbor Grove to move here, because they like Westboro so much.
Okay. That is all for my issues and correspondence, thank you for the work.
Excellent.
On that note, which now officially happened, I'm going to make a motion for executive session.
All right, since I'm on practice here, hold on a second. All right, say hello, speak. Michael. I'm going to enter into executive session under National Law Chapter 38, section 21a3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining under National Law Chapter 38, section 21a6 to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate and under National Law Chapter 38, section 21a7 to act under the authority of the board to approve executive session minutes.
This chair, I declare that an open meeting with a virtual effect on the boards without any negotiating positions. We will not reconvene in open session, although our session is session is the second for motion. Move consecutively, call vote, all in favor, call vote. Sean.
You, yes.
Sean.
Marshall, yes.
I hope she has, and her guests, the motion passes 4-0 for being present on a thing Westboro TV, broadcasting, recording the meeting, and doing so for other boards and committees as well. I'm just glad for keeping the minutes, thank you very much.